Okay, good evening everyone, we are on the record. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, the 11th day of March 2015. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. The clock on my cellphone is showing 6:18 PM. May we have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Here.
Councilperson Rivera.
Here.
Councilperson Waterman.
Here.
And Council President LaVaro.
Here.
We have nine council members in attendance at 6:18 PM. Can we kindly rise for a moment of silence, please?
Bernard Gordon, father of Jamie Gordon, from the Department of Recreation.
Claude Jones, my dad, who was laid to peace and rest, I'm sorry, on Monday. May God be with him.
John Watson, son of Inspector Mary Watson, from the Department of Fire Prevention. William Kel- Go ahead.
McDalia Rivera.
William Kelty Senior, father of Kevin Kelty, Department of Tax Assessor's Office. Mark Anthony Garrettson, brother of Vito Galucci, the Parking Authority. Deacon Chesterfield Powell, of Montgomery Gardens Tenant Corporation.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Council President LaVaro, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the Municipal Council for the calendar year 2015, and filed in the office of the city clerk on Wednesday, November 26, 2014. In addition, at its time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Friday, March 6, 2015, at 4:00 PM to the Municipal Council, Mayor, Business Administrator Corporation Council, and the local newspapers. So I can certify to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law and also on the World Wide Web. Council members, before we proceed... Is that somebody's cellphone? Can we silence it? Council members, I need a motion to add Item 3L and Items 10Z10 through 10Z14, with the exception of 10Z13, which is not being added.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera. Second by Councilperson Coleman, on a motion to add Items 3L and 10Z10 through 10Z14, with the exception of 10Z13. Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young. Uh... Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman. And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to add the items. Council members, I have a motion to defer to Item 3L by Council President LaVaro. May I have a second?
Second.
Second made first by Councilperson Rivera. On a motion to defer to Item 3L, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0. If you would allow me to read 3L into the record, which I'm very happy to do. 3L is Ordinance 15-038, an ordinance rededicating the Municipal Council Chambers as the Anna and Anthony R. Cucci Memorial Council Chambers. On the ordinance, to introduce the ordinance, Councilperson Kajuski.
I vote aye, and I want to say that I met Tony Cucci when he was a mayor, and I was working in the Police Director's Office, and had the opportunity to sit with him at many meetings, and I can tell you, he was a real good guy. He served this country in the Marines, and he also served this city as mayor and as a councilman, so again, I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
I'd say aye, and I just want to say I know Cucci for over forty-some-odd years, and he was very good to us in the second precinct and the...
Turn. Turn. Put the mic up like this.
As I said, I just want to say, I know Cucci for forty-some-odd years. He was very good to us in the police precinct and the second precinct. Cooked us macaroni at night sometimes, and the guy was a real gentleman and a fellow Marine.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Before I vote, I have to definitely say something about Mayor Cucci. This is a guy who... When I was a little kid, we would play baseball on his property, and he was always used to get upset, and he goes, "Jesus, I'm gonna have to sponsor your team so I can get your kids out of my block." And he sponsored my team when I was nine-years-old till I was sixteen-years-old. The man was great. True people's mayor, people friend, people person. Loved the guy to death, and with that, I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleagues. May Mayor Cucci rest in peace, and to his family, and everyone who's loved him, and so many people do. Just want you to know that our prayers are with you and their family, and may Mayor Cucci rest in peace, and thank you, Mayor Cucci, for all your service to Jersey City. I vote aye.
I'm sure. You want to announce it? Could we all just take a moment for a moment of silence, just for Mayor Anthony Cucci? Thank you. Okay. Onto our regular scheduled business. Item... These are first reading ordinances. Item 3A, City Ordinance 15-027, calendar year 2015, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cap bank. This is going to replace the second reading ordinance, the first second reading ordinance, item 4A. Item 3B, City Ordinance 15-028, an ordinance amending Chapter 239 of the Municipal Code to add rules and regulations for a skate park and burial lane park. Item 3C, City Ordinance 15-029, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking, Standing and Stopping, Article 9, Parking for the Disabled of the Jersey City Code, Designating a Reserved Parking Space at 240 Arlington Avenue, 111 Baldwin Avenue, 63 Beach Street, 177 Boyd Avenue, 56 Brinkhoff Street, 115 Carlton Avenue, 71 Clamart Avenue, 38 Clark Avenue, 60 Clark Avenue, 71 Clamart Avenue, 72 Clendeney Avenue, 29 Crescent Avenue, 61 Duncan Avenue, 234 Duncan Avenue, 131A Dwight Street, 15 Floyd Street, 98 Harmon Street, 159 Hutton Street, 130 Irvington Street, 88 Kensington Avenue, 140 Lexington Avenue, 292 Linden Avenue, 230 McAdoo Avenue, 89 Mallory Avenue, 113 to 107 Nelson Avenue, 62 Oak Street, 388 Palisade Avenue, 28 South Street, 188 South Street, 865 Summit Avenue, 304 Terrence Avenue, 74 Union Street, 190 Van Nostrand Avenue, 39 Van Wagon Avenue, 89 Wales Avenue, 69 Wallace Avenue, 14 Wilkerson Avenue, 46 Zabriskie Street, 58 Zabriskie Street, 111 Zabriskie Street, and 130 Zabriskie Street, and repeal the reserved parking space at 131-133 Boyd Avenue and at 41 Morton Place. Item 3D, Ordinance 15-030, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 332-8, prohibited right turns on red signal of the Jersey City Traffic Code, amending the days and hours the right turn on... Excuse me. The right turn red signal is prohibited on Mamet Street and Grand Street, Douglas and Arthur Skinner Memorial Drive, formerly known as Jersey Avenue, and Grand Street, Maron Boulevard and Grand Street, Warren Street and Grand Street, and Washington Street and Grand Street, to 8:00 AM, excuse me, to 4:00 and 4:00 PM, school days and all approaches. Item 3E, City Ordinance 15-031, Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City Adopting Amendments to the Land Development Ordinance for Administrative Revisions to Zones Throughout. Item 3F, City Ordinance 15-032, an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City Adopting Amendments to the Land Development Ordinance for Zoning Board Adjustment Membership. Item 3G, City Ordinance 15-033, an ordinance supplementing Chapter A 351, Executive Orders and Ordinances of the Jersey City Code to Create a New Position of Director of Communications Center. Item 3H, City Ordinance 15-034, an ordinance approving the five-year tax exemption pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 40A:21-1, Exec, and Section 304-9 of the Municipal Code for Property Designated as Block 7806, Lot 18.01 on the city's tax map, and more commonly known by the street address of 850-852 Newark Avenue, for the entity known as the Navara Group LLC. Excuse me. Item 3I, City Ordinance 15-035, an ordinance approving the 10-year tax exemption for a market-rate mixed-use rental project to be constructed by 17-19 Division Street Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 40A:20-1, Exec, for the property designated as Block 9806, Lot 6.01, formerly former lots 6 and 7 on the city's tax map, and more commonly known by the street address of 17 Division Street. Item 3J, City Ordinance 15-036, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 8, Permit Parking, Amending Sections 332-66, On-Street Resident-Only Park... Resident-Only Permit Parking, excuse me, of the Jersey City Traffic Code, Extending Zone 11 On-Street Resident-Only Permit Parking to Include Apollo Street Entire Length, Bergen Avenue West Side Between Duncan Avenue and Fairmont Avenue, Bowlin Street The Entire Length, Britton Street The Entire Length, Duncan Avenue Between Bergen Avenue and West Side Avenue, Duncan Court Entire Length, Fairmont Avenue Between West Side Avenue and Bergen Avenue, Kennedy Boulevard East Side, Duncan Avenue to 2622 Kennedy Boulevard and the West Side Between Duncan Avenue to 2615 Kennedy Boulevard and Montgomery Streets Outside Between West Side and Bergen Avenue, Monday through Friday, 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Item 3K, City Ordinance 15-037, Ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City Amending Chapter 296 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 6, Street Names That Will Provide a Street Naming Process for New Streets and for Renaming Existing Streets, and to Create a New Section 345-21A, Street Naming Within the Land Development Ordinance That References the Standards and Procedures Established in Chapter 296. Item...
Sean.
Yes.
10K... 3K is pulled.
3K is pulled?
Yes.
There's a technical glitch between...
Sorry, I didn't know that.
...the language in that one and what was passed by the planning board, so they just need to sync it back up before we introduce it.
So withdrawing 3K, correct? Okay. And 3L, I read into the record early, we voted on it, that was the... I'll read it again since it is a special ordinance. It's 3L, City Ordinance 15-038, an ordinance rededicating the Municipal Council Chambers as the Anna and Anthony R. Cucci Memorial Council Chambers. So, council members, on Items 3A through 3L, actually, we're gonna do 3A through 3J. 3K was withdrawn and 3L was voted on earlier. For introduction, Councilperson Kajuski.
Excuse me. Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye for introductions.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
All first reading ordinance, with the exception of 3K, have been introduced 9-0. Onto our second reading ordinances. Our first second reading ordinance is an ordinance that is being... That was replaced by the first reading ordinance. So, it's 4A, City Ordinance 15-018, to ordinance, calendar year 2015, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limit and to establish a cap bank according to NJSA I'm gonna call for a public hearing on this ordinance, but just to give a reminder to the members of the public that this will be on for second reading, the new ordinance that was introduced. So, hearing that, this is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion. Just to clarify, this is actually gonna be defeated.
This is gonna be defeated.
Ordinance is gonna be defeated, there's a technical mistake in it.
Right.
And so it's being reintroduced as first reading, and we'll come back at the next...
Right. It was already reintroduced. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna give the motion to Councilperson Waterman without turning around, and I give the second to Councilperson Osborne. Hope I'm getting these right. On a motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young. Uh... Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to close the public hearing. For final consideration and for defection... Defeat? City Ordinance 15-018, Councilperson Ramchow. Excuse me. Councilperson Kajuski.
No.
I'm speeding. I'm speeding. Councilperson Ramchow.
No.
Councilperson Bajana.
No.
Your vote again, Councilperson Bajana?
No.
Thank you. Councilperson Young.
Nope.
Councilperson Osborne.
No.
Councilperson Coleman.
No.
Councilperson Rivera.
No.
Councilperson Waterman. And Council President LaVaro.
No.
City Ordinance 15-018 is defeated 0-9, with all council members voting no. Our next second reading ordinance is City Ordinance 15-019, an ordinance authorizing the City of Jersey City to execute a month-to-month lease not to exceed six months with 3,000 Kennedy Boulevard LLC for the use of 27 parking spaces at 3,000 Kennedy Boulevard, Jersey City. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, and I see Yvonne Bolser.
Yes. I have a question. This lease, B, isn't that predicated upon the fact that you're gonna vote on C? So if you're gonna vote on C because you're moving the police department out, is that predicated on all?
No. To the BA?
No, this affects the employees that'll be moving out of Journal Square into 394 Central Avenue. This has nothing to do with the hub.
No. Okay, but the employees have...
Or Marion Gardens.
Or Marion Gardens.
Right.
So that's... Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Second.
Give me that motion again. Waterman. Okay. Ramchow. You're so soft-spoken, Councilperson Waterman. It's hard for me to hear. And a second on...
The motion.
Ramchow.
Ramchow, okay. I'm sorry.
Okay.
On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 15-019. For final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-019, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
City Ordinance is adopted 9-0 unanimously, 15-019. Item 4C, City Ordinance 15-020, an ordinance authorizing the City of Jersey City to enter into a lease purchase agreement, ASLSI, with Jersey City Municipal LLC, ASLSR, for author space to be constructed at the Martin Luther King Drive Hub on a portion of Lot 17, Block 21201, at the intersection of Carney Avenue and Martin Luther King Drive. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, and I see Laverne Washington.
Yes.
Before we begin, Laverne, if I may ask, as a courtesy, we've normally deferred to the elected officials who've come to public to speak to the council.
No problem.
And I know...
I have no problem.
If you'll do me that favor.
Sure.
Freeholder.
Sure. I didn't think anybody else was gonna have me.
Okay. Continue.
Okay, babe.
Freeholder, this is fine. Thank you, freeholder. You have the floor.
I think this is a very good project for our community, and mainly that it would bring jobs to our community, and housing, I assume, still is part of this project. Is it?
Yes.
And we need the work, and we want to make sure Jersey City residents do get jobs at this... At the hub. So my point is that we really... It's a beautiful concept for the community, but mainly it's jobs and permanent jobs, from my understanding. So I welcome them to our community, and thank you. Because I have a bunch of young men that are sitting out here that are developers and contractors that need work. They're small contractors, and I had them to come to this meeting tonight so that they can see what go on and how they can get some work from this project, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Yvonne Bolser.
Yes. Yvonne Bolser, I would like to know, for the record, who owns this land?
It's a joint partnership with the JCR and Brandywine.
Okay.
Currently.
So...
When the project is approved, it'll be owned by the LLC that was created just for the building of this building.
So if it's owned by JC... Well, owned by a non... Owned by Jersey City through an autonomous agency, that means we should be charging them some rent because that's part of our land. That's what I don't see... When I was reading this ordinance, and I'm saying... That's why I asked correctly. We're paying them rent down the road, but the land, from what I'm reading, is owned by a public entity, us, through an autonomous agency, so we should be charging them rent, from my point of view.
Well, although it says rent, this agreement is actually a purchase agreement. And it does say rent, Yvonne, you're right, but we're not really paying rent. What we're doing is paying down the mortgage to build the building and own it. So at the end of the lease, it'll actually be our building, the city's building.
Okay, but from the point of view of my reading this, here is a building going in in which I'm allowing a third party to build something, and I'm not charging them rent. We will be paying the rent, yet the land belongs to me, the public. That's what I find confusing. Now, you explained that, I don't... I find it confusing, and I don't necessarily agree with that kind of concept, but I have another issue that I want to bring up. I spoke about this last week. I did an Oprah to know about the contamination. I have not had a response, and I know your response at the caucus meeting, well, it's only a parking lot, and I know what happened in Newark, when they used a parking lot that was considered low-level radiation, and then they put housing on it, and the people got sick. We're talking about putting people on a building in which municipal employees work, and we're not testing the soil before we do anything, because if there's contamination there... If there's a contamination there, who's responsible? The taxpayer in Jersey City, or what? Because we should not be starting... We should not go into contract until we test for that, because we're having... I don't know how many employees... Let's say a thousand employees in there. Their health is now my concern, if they come around to the city. So, are we gonna do with the contamination? I mean, I'm waiting for the DEP to get back to me, things like that. That'll take a very long time. But I remember when Ward F and Ward E was where they took contaminated soil and dumped it. In fact, one day I had a conversation with Lumance, and Lumance said, "Why is certain lands in Ward F does not have grass and all kind of things that I have in my backyard, and weeds?" He says, "That's because the land's contaminated. If you see an empty lot and nothing is growing on it, that's contamination." And yes, a lot of that in Ward F. So, I want to know... Now, I'm not an employee, but why do we work for government that does not want to test the soil first? That's gonna come back and haunt us, and I don't want the same thing happening down the road when there's an issue and we have to fix it. Why can't we test it before we sign a deal and know what our liability is, not down the road? Ward E, Ward F has a lot in town made of soil.
Yvonne, I think...
Yeah, I would be happy to answer that question. That's a very, very good question about the environmental issues on that land, and we've discussed this many times, and it's so important that I'm happy to answer your question about it. There are several issues that have to be addressed when you're talking about the environmental. First off, the property is owned by the city in partnership, so if there's any environmental issues with the property, we would... The city would be responsible in any event. We will be testing the soils before we begin building. We're not going to test it before the deal is agreed to, because that is not usually how you build a building. If we were to test it ahead of time, what would happen is this. Let's say we do find something there underneath the parking lot at the hub. Would the city then not clean it up? Of course we would have to clean it up, there are people who live across the street from that parking lot. So, the administration's point of view is that absolutely we're gonna do testing, we wouldn't build the building without doing that, but there's no point in doing it beforehand because whatever we do find, we are going to clean up.
Okay. You see, this is the problem I have, is that there's a different level for contamination for a parking lot than there is for a building. So what might be okay for a parking lot, because cars cannot, you know, have cancer, but people can, would not be the same thing for a building.
Well, yeah. You're right. Yvonne, you're right. It won't be the city that determines whether... What the appropriate cleanup is, that's the state will decide.
See, you're putting... This contract puts the taxpayers and the employees on the hook, because you're determined to do this before there's contamination. There could be something there... I don't want to, you know, intrude in the night. If it's okay for a parking lot, that's fine, but it's prudent, from my point of view, to test to see whether or not it should be there before we sign something. It's... What is fine for a parking lot is not fine for the people who work here. These are the employees around here. You are the employees and your workers. It might not be fine for them, but it might be fine for the parking lot. And then you're gonna have me, a taxpayer, on the hook, and I don't find that to be acceptable. I don't think it's right, and I don't work for the city, but I don't think it is right to put any employee, municipal employee there until we test the soil first. And I'm speaking from their point of view, but I'm speaking from my point of view. I mean, that is absolutely wrong.
So, no, thank you, Yvonne. So, understood, you think it should be tested prior to anything?
Yes. That, yes, and, you know, I think if you don't do that, you're putting politics before people. That's only how you can do it. People should be before politics. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Freeholder Ballmer, welcome to City Council Chambers.
Good afternoon, good evening, Council President and Council members. This project that's going in Ward F is very much needed. It's a great investment into the area. It definitely can be an anchor. I reviewed the agenda, and I'm hoping this time we can have a unanimous nine zero vote in support of it. And the council members who aren't in support of it, I would welcome them to walk the neighborhood with me and talk to the many contractors and qualified Jersey City residents that can benefit from a project like this. Any economic development happening in Jersey City should benefit the people that live here. We have a disparity study out that shows minorities have had zero participation here. And I think this would be a great project to demonstrate that the Philip administration is committed to the residents in Ward F, not only in investing into it, but making sure that the people who live there have an opportunity to work. So I'm here in support of it, and I'm hoping we also can get a nine oh vote for the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder, thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Tamika McReynolds. I am the First Lady of the Monalla Baptist Church. I would like to say good evening to the Council President, to all of the council that's before me. I'm going to be really, really brief. My husband is here, Pastor John H. McReynolds, in the audience as well. And we just want you to know that we are in support of the hub. We are in support because on an everyday basis, my husband gets where people comes into his office looking for job opportunities, all kinds of opportunities for our city and for our community. I just want to say whatever we are able to do and be in support of it, we are here to do that. You have a good evening, and we thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Virginia Miller, community activist. I'm here also in support of Ordinance one five oh two zero. But I would also like the language to be modified to allow for sampling of the soil for contamination before you start the construction. I would like to see that, and I'm sure that's what you're going to do. We need the mini city hall to go up in the hub because I feel as though it will bring jobs. It's going to bring over, I'm sure, two hundred city employees, which will also bring stores into our area, which we need. And Councilman Young, we will look on Martin Luther King the same way it looks up on Central Avenue where you are. That's the way we want to go back to. Because when I first came to Jersey City, there were stores up and down. That was a Sunday afternoon, we would go and window shop. So that's how we want to see it again. Also, I'm sure we will have more Jersey City Department, security, the police presence. And we would also like to see more constituent services added to that building. Because I think I remember when I was here the last time, and you were talking about it. I don't remember hearing about the tax office, a mini tax office going into that building. I'm suggesting that you do that because when I listen to the seniors, and especially the ones that still own homes, and they have to get on a bus if they don't drive, they're always running down the city hall to pay their taxes. So I would also like to see you, other than WIC and Human Services and what other services you're putting there, also add the tax office there. We would also like to see a restaurant or a couple of restaurants because we used to go to the Ponderosa, which is closed. A lot of us used to go after church on Sundays and sit down and eat and greet meet other people. So maybe with you putting the mini city hall there, the stores are going to come in because people will be there. And maybe you can get some construction to bring in some restaurants because there are a lot of churches in the area, and the people can go and sit and eat instead of going to Newark. Lots of times we go to Linden, to the Fun Buffet, and we run into a lot of people from Jersey City there. So I would like to see a nine zero vote on this because I see eight six, eight seven two. So I'm looking for Councilman Young and Councilman Bajiano. When you do the final vote, I want to see a nine zero. And thank you so much, and good evening, council.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City officials.
Jermaine Robinson, correct?
Jermaine Robinson, yes. City council members, and finally, my fellow constituents. My name is Jermaine Robinson. I'm a Ward F business owner and a lifetime resident. And I'm here on behalf of my ward to applaud you guys. And I also want to see a nine zero vote because it's finally time that the mayor and the council members have put their money where their mouths are. So I want to say thank you. I can say as a proud Ward F businessman that in the year 2000, when the hub was set to be open, I was both excited and hungry because I knew my possibilities of walking in my father's shoes as a profitable businessman were back. And what better place to do it than our original shopping district, what was formerly known as Jackson Avenue? Fast forward fifteen years, and our shopping district is still not back. But as a business owner, I know we need certain things to happen before our businesses can succeed. The first is safety. Now, I know with a show of hands, we will have none, that who wants to show up to work and be unsafe and still be happy? And we all know happy workers are way more productive. And what better way to create safety than to bring more people, jobs, and businesses to the community that require it? And I believe that the city hall annex would be a great addition. I also believe that for Jersey City to truly become the sixth borough, which it has already been dubbed, Ward F can no longer play the evil stepsister. Ward F has to go to the dance and become Cinderella. I believe this is a huge step forward in that glass slipper. And the time is ticking, ladies and gentlemen. The time is now for us to stand up and stand united as a community. And I believe the city hall annex can do us no harm. In fact, I would believe it to be very criminal if we sit back and continue to do the same things that has been done for the last fifteen years. Now, I know there's questions about finances, but as we all know as homeowners, the value of paying it forward, paying a little bit more today to achieve the American dream tomorrow. And for that reason, I have remained in Ward F because I believe in the people, and I also believe in the future of our city. So with that being said, thank you again, council, and for what I believe doing the right thing at this right moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jason Berg.
Thank you, Jason Berg. I like the lease to own, I just happened to pick this up. I like the fact that it's saving money on whatever page four. Very good. How many years will it take for this purchase to be completed? How many years on the city's docket? Twenty-five years?
Mike.
Twenty-five years. And we're borrowing money from the redevelopment corporation? They're supposed to be co-partners?
Can you ask your question again?
Hello, hello. Sorry about that. No, the developer is providing the finance from a third party.
How much interest do they have right now?
It's four point seven.
That's not bad, but it's not good. Okay, uh...
Today, the local finance board voted unanimously to approve this ordinance and the borrowing behind it. In fact, one of the local finance board members, Ida Rodriguez, asked me to commend the council and the mayor on this project. And I told her I would do that. She gave me an opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Always glad to be assistant to our servants. Okay, with that, do you have, you have a Plan A and a Plan B, forty-five thousand square feet and sixty thousand square feet? Is there, is there going to be voting on the plan tonight or...
It'll be forty-five thousand.
Five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And how many, roughly in footage? Because I don't think, I can't think in square feet.
Oh. So how big is the building? The footprint of the building?
Right.
Do you have an idea how...
These gentlemen from Brandywine?
Well, what's that like about, uh... I know, but looking at your, remembering...
Mr. Corrado, if you give him the mic if he's going to speak.
Yeah. An estimate on length and width?
Yeah, it's about a...
Excuse me, I don't think of square feet.
Okay. Let's not engage in...
I'll look that up right now and get it to you.
Right, right, would it be a hundred by...
About a hundred.
Hundred feet by fifty feet?
Right.
And two stories?
Yeah. It's actually a third story too. Small third story.
All right, great. That's fantastic. And I hope that they, everything's been planned in for sustainability in this project?
Absolutely.
What's the question?
The question, will it be built for sustainability so it's a small carbon foothold?
Right.
And makes its own energy and puts it back into the building? So we, the people, don't have to be siphoned off?
Understood.
Can that be done?
To the carbon footprint on the project from...
The, all the mechanicals and whatnot are built to last and use effective energy so the costs stay low. Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen. We need this construction. It will help our Ward F, and I'm just over to Ward A. So anything that could help us, not going down to, down here, try to find parking space, is very desirable. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Next speaker.
William Breaker.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a lifelong resident of Ward F. I currently serve as the president of the Jersey City branch of the NAACP. A journey of a thousand miles begins with one step. Hopefully, this project will be that beginning of a renaissance of the area in which I call home. I'm here to speak in support of the city hall annex project, Ordinance number one five zero two oh. I believe there are some residual benefits to this particular project. Number one, the building will be occupied by some two hundred people. Hopefully, they will shop and dine in the hub area, which will be good for the commercial business. Number two, the mayor will have a satellite office there. Hopefully, that will be good for the people. Some of the offices that will be located there will be clinics and licensing agencies, and thus bringing those items closer to the people of Ward F. Also, this building will ultimately be owned by Jersey City, and that's a much better deal than renting these businesses. So that's good for all the taxpayers. Hopefully, some young brothers who live in Ward F will get some jobs out of this because there are certain grids in Ward F where unemployment with our young people may be as high as fifty percent. So all in all, I think this is a good project, and we at the NAACP support it one hundred percent. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, Bruce Austin.
Good evening to my good friend Councilman Rau.
Good evening. Good to see you. Good to see you too, Bruce.
I'm here in support of the African-American community, but more importantly, I'm here in support of this project, but also to support the African-American leadership on this council. It's one thing to support this project, but council, I'm challenging you to do something even more. It can't stop with one building. We've done that already. We need more than just this one building. Okay? The building is a start, but we've seen this before. The council, you gave us a hub. The hub was built, the hub was promised with, housing was coming, was called the Jackson Estates, that never materialized. There was other things that had been promised along the way in this Martin Luther King Drive redevelopment plan. Now, I understand what President Breaker said as far as the first step. We've seen this first step over and over and over again. You have to meet the challenge and give us more. We need to empower the special improvement district up there. We have to do, we have to do more as a community. You give us a building. If this administration, if the only thing that you're going to do is give us a building, and you're not going to add on to that, then don't give us a building. Don't sell us false hope. We've been, we've been down that road all day. We have proven, we have proven over the past eighteen months that we have contractors in our communities such as Barnes Construction, my good friend Bernard Shivers, Wayne Harmon. We have to be ensure that the contractors in the community are going to get these jobs. Because if they get these jobs, they're going to ensure that the Ward F residents, the Ward A residents, the people in the southern part of this district get those jobs in the community. So those are the things that I'm going to ask you. If you're going to approve this, that you ask Brandywine to make the full commitment to our community and make sure that this is not outsourced to other contractors when, after the deal is signed.
Bruce, let me just say something, that my number one question on this project is to make sure it was union, and it is union, project labor agreement. So yes, the local Jersey City resident, the contractor, will get a job on this project.
But with all due respect, Councilman, it's union jobs on the waterfront, and we're not getting those jobs now. So we don't have the trust, we don't have the trust that once you sign those contracts, are they going to get enforced? That's the problem we have.
I can assure... Bruce, look, I can assure you that if you found out that there's contractor working in the waterfront and it's union job, and they're not getting a job, you send me an email, and I will go down there with you to make sure these Jersey City residents, the contractors in Jersey City, get these jobs.
Well, I don't mean to be off, I don't mean to be off topic, but we do...
Tell me that.
Remind, you have to remind me now, maybe I'm wrong. But we did employ former Governor McGreevy to look over these tax abatements, and I still haven't found out if people are conforming to those codes. So that's, that's the mistrust that's in our community. We are tired of, we are tired of going, having administrations come in and say that, you're with us, you give us a building, you want us to be quiet. Because I'm going to tell you what happened. You gave us the Batum Center, and we thought that was going to be something that was going to empower the neighborhood. Then you gave, then you give us, you give us the hub, right? Then you turn around and you start, you downgraded the Jackson Estate program into these more economically friendly homes, but they're suspect. They're suspect. They're suspect, to say the least. They're suspecting the point that we were promised one thing and we were given something else. That's the problem we have. We have a Martin Luther King Drive redevelopment plan. When are we going to enforce that plan? If it, if it means that we need to redo it again, let's have that argument now. Let's redo it now.
So I'll tell you...
Okay, folks.
So I'll tell you, as I'm here, as elected official on the city council, great activists like you to work with us to make the city move forward. And that's great.
It's funny when you say that, because when I was sixteen years old, I was meeting on Carney MLK in the back of the barber shop of Omar Barbo, a part of that Martin Luther King Drive stare committee, with people like Wayne Harmon, President Breaker, and different ones. ones, and we see what's been done. What I'm trying to tell you right now, enough is enough. We're going to hold this administration accountable to make sure that we get more than one building. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, if you would just kindly state your name?
My name is Manuel M. Wolf Olivo.
I.
Manuel?
Manuel?
Manuel.
Manuel, I'm sorry. It's hard to hear.
M. Wolf Olivo.
And your last name?
Olivo, O-L-I-V-O.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm here today to speak regarding the Hub project, to be located just a few yards away from Martin's Place. I've been working with the city council and city members and city activists for a while on this project, and I think since this is the time that this issue has finally come forward, that some history regarding the project be known and placed on the record, and also along with that, offer my support and request that this council take a look at all the factors that are affecting our community as a whole, culturally as well as economically. The mark that can be made here tonight can set off a stream of promises to be kept, as was just mentioned. So with that, first let me start by saying I am in support of this project, but I'm even more pleased and honored with the members of this city council that I have over the last couple of months, brought issue by issue to them and have been heard, and have the confidence that you will rise and make those hearings, those issues, real. I've done my best as a member of the community to offer them freely, without pause, and made myself available on every issue. So let me start off by saying that Martin's Place, the home of the Second Chance for those who are in prison and now expanding to those who are unemployed, was built by the same ex-convicts that today it serves. Brandywine afforded us the opportunity to take local community citizens who had no experience in construction, hire them, employ them at a Davis Beacon rate that they gave us that was not required, and employ them at the hub on the Martin's Project. Martin's Place was built by the same people it today serves, and the city council has the thanks for that, with the support of Brandywine for allowing us to do that. That's part of the history. We know that we have an opportunity to do more here with this city annex. It represents not only a culture that needs to be stimulated, but the beginning of a legacy of work. When I look across the state to other contractors, I see fathers and sons and their sons working in construction across their side of the state for decades and decades. We do not have that legacy of work here in Jersey City. Our history shows, Gerard Iaspari reports, that our government has never fortified that and built it into our culture, but we can do that today. We can start a trend where we can provide a legacy of work for the community of Jersey City. Those of you on the city council who know me, know, have done the research, have done the work, have come to the city and pleaded to help.
Yeah, Mr. Olivo, what you're saying is very important, but I need you to tie it up with what we're discussing tonight, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So what I'm saying here is that the Hub project, city annex, can be performed in the same fashion, with the same success as Martin's Place. Not only can unions participate, but also the number of contractors, local contractors in the area, they can participate either as receiving work on their own, they can participate through signatories, they can participate through legislative sent. I've worked with many of the contractors, the local contractors, and they are more than willing to form an umbrella organization to do that. So what I ask today is that we remember the history that has led to this project, that we remember the culture that's there, that remember the economics sense that's being made here, and pass that on to a generation. So I ask the city council to vote one-hundred percent, all members nine, on this project. Thank you.
Manuel? Thank you. Never mind, never mind. Done? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. Hi, my name is Alvin Pettit, and I'm a resident of Jersey City in that area, in the Ward F area, as well as the director of the Mary Bethune Life Center. And I would just like to say that I've lived in Jersey City for a lot of years, and I've seen, I live off of Monticello Avenue, which ties into MLK, and I've seen a lot of businesses come and go. I mean, you see little glimmers of hope, and then you sometimes see two steps backwards as far as economic development in that area. And I feel that definitely, you know, it's very important to have something that gives the area an energy boost, if that's the best word I can use, and gives, when an area is struggling as much as that area has been economically over the years, you have to, it needs a little help, and I feel that this project can be that little bit of help that it needs. Now, you know, I hear, you know, some people locally, most people here seems like afford the project. I've heard some people.
You just, yeah, there you go.
Some people against the project, but whether it works or whether it doesn't, you know, is yet to be seen, but at least it's an effort. It's something being done. It's, 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 it's an attempt to try to make the area better, and I feel that is the most important thing. It ties in with the efforts that are already going on in the area, you know, working at the Batum Center every day, trying to bring something to the community that we do there on a daily basis, trying to energize the community, cultural things. You need also that economic development from, as so many people here have said today, from just having a business there, people that will spend money, people that will support restaurants, things that restaurants can build up around, that stores can build up around. If you don't have the foot traffic there, you don't have the infrastructure to make that happen, you're never going to have that kind of economic development. So that's the development. So I feel that that's why this project is so important and why it needs to get done. And, you know, that's the best thing I can say about it. I hope it happens, and, I just, I hope it happens.
Thank you. Thank you, Alvin. Next speaker?
Good evening.
Evening.
I was sitting in the back just listening to the people talk, and I was wondering how many people here know that the district lines for Ward E and Ward F have been changed? For example, Montgomery Street, corner from the library, which is the southwest corner of that intersection, all the way down Montgomery Street to Montgomery Projects, and south on Jersey Avenue, all of that is now part of Ward F. It used to be a part of Ward E. So when people start talking about Ward F and, and, you know, what, what area we're talking about, some people still have the old six wards with the lines that we've always had, but now we have new lines, and you have to take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker? Kabili Tari.
Kabili, tell you, I first want to applaud you, Councilwoman Coleman, for bringing this idea back to life. It's a good idea. Bobby Jackson introduced this idea when he was the city council president during the McCain administration. I also want to raise up the fact that Bruce Austin is absolutely correct. I don't remember the exact year when many of us went on Journal Square where Bob Carter's office was then, one evening, closed it down for several hours, and ensured the fact that there would be empowerment in that plan. Now, when asked who owns it, and I listen to the answer, there's a piece that was left out, that mandated community board, and it should still be in the plan. Now, let me back up. The mandated decision-making community board. Now, unless somebody went off somewhere one night and whited it out, then that board is an owner and should be in this process. Otherwise, we need to make some amendments, as Virginia Miller said. I agree with Virginia Miller. The NAACP, it, we have a national environmental justice mandate, because there's too many of these things in African-Americans and other communities of color, that is contamination, that many tax office she talked about. WIC is a good thing, but there are more needs in our community than WIC. Now, there just is, and we need to talk about real city services going up in that hood, like IE, a tax office, and some other things that everyday citizens use every day. The other thing that I want to deal with is that we are very much aware of a black bank that is forty-two years old, that is headquartered in the city of Newark, that can't get an inch of nothing in this city that deals with real economic empowerment. Now, you know, City National Bank, and administration knows who City National Bank is, because while they sat on the council, they were introduced to them.
Kabili, are you tying this in with the, this ordinance?
Yes, I'm speaking on why I think we should, really, it's a good idea, but what, what it is that needs to be amended, because Virginia Miller's correct. There needs to be some serious amendments to this. And one of them is, how is City National Bank going to be included in this here, like, starting tomorrow and ongoing? Because we have real entities that somehow never get to skip all of these good ideas, because we went all the way to Atlanta and brought Mina Jackson and his people in here when we first constructed this plan. Brandywine, Bruce Austin is correct again. Brandywine was contracted seven to ten years ago to bring economic viability into their hood. Now, I don't know about y'all, but I need to know what you see that I don't see. So, in all due respect, Councilman, while I'm here, Brandywine's promises don't mean nothing. Put it all in writing, all of it, and as somebody was saying earlier, it don't have to be union jobs, because, Verona, tell you, I would actually go in the streets and bring people like her nephew into my office and struggle to make sure that they got parts of this. But Brandywine, now I'm not attacking, I'm speaking fact, go get the contract. I like what Councilwoman Osborn raises a lot, and let's look at some performance data. So if it's not in writing, step back for a minute, counsel. Don't kill this idea, but step back for a minute, and God knows, make some serious amendments. The other thing I want to raise is that what will our hood look like five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? Because again, Bruce was correct, and Jermaine Robertson is correct. Let's make sure that we put our money where our mouth is, but we, it's time for us to be empowered, empowered. Now, it's good the building is coming. Again, God bless you, thank you, and to you and your family, our prayers are with you, and y'all well done on this project.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon, councilpeople. The reason why I'm here today.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you raise the microphone up?
The reason why I'm here today.
Your name, sir? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Peter Eric Barnes.
Go ahead.
The reason why I'm here today, I'm in support of the annex building being built in F Ward. And I know for a fact, the only reason that's happening is because everybody's been stirred up. Everybody on this board knows that we need a change. We definitely need a change. And the only way the change is going to come, that we all have to work as one unit to make the change. Everybody here in the audience and on that board know that we need jobs. The only way it's going to change, if we get jobs and work to build back up our community. Everybody know on that board, I wasn't a guy that would stand up here and ask anybody for anything for my past, but I changed. And it wasn't through myself, it was through the situation that I had to go to to get to this point. This point where I'm at in my life, I'm good. I'm not comfortable, but I'm good. Want to know why? Because the decisions that I make today are not on me, I get them from a higher power to move and maneuver around all this mess. But everybody on that board today, please vote for this annex building, because if we don't get this annex building, and if we don't get this work, the avenues is going to be worser, it's going to be bad. The people going to keep running to the churches, the people going to keep running to the city council, because we need some type of different employment. It's good that the hub is there for job training, but it'd even be better if we can put a building up and put some work there for the people. That's the only reason I'm here today, to ask y'all, I'm begging you, I'm not asking you, to please put that building in and give us some work in this F Ward, A Ward, C Ward. We need it. This is the only way everything's going to look good for y'all. If we get this work, we can make it look good, because everybody's going to work, and whoever's not on that level of work, they're not going to get a job. I already know the procedure for y'all. If we can't get it done, the union going to get it done. So I'm just asking y'all, please give us a chance, give us the opportunity, what we've been doing. If you look around, these hands worked on everything that's moving, these clothes been there and done it for the last five years. So I'm just begging you, please give us the opportunity to work in our F Ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is June Jones. I'm the president of the Morris Canal Community Development Corporation in the Lafayette section in Ward F. Before I speak, Councilwoman Coleman, I just want to give you my sincerest condolences for the death, passing of your father.
Thank you, June.
This is, this is, this project, I'm speaking in support of, I think this is a major move by this administration, and I too, Councilwoman, thank you for bringing this idea back to light. It's only, it only helps if it works, and so these discussions that we're having now, the feelings that people are talking about now are important for you to jot down and not forget, and it's almost sinful that you're almost hearing the same songs over and over again, because this has happened so many times by previous administrations. I can share some of the struggles that I go through as a local resident and a local community development. There should be more support by our administrations to get things done in the community, especially through nonprofits that are here to help the city run smoother. I'd like to say that the community participation, the empowerment that Kabili just spoke of, I think is vitally important. I think he was looking at my notes. But the reason why I say that is because the community is the consistent heart of everything. Most administrations are here for four years, hopefully more. The consistency in this stuff is the community, and they can tell you, as, as, as some have already told you in previous promises that have been made, that has been broken. So you can make a promise today, and if you're not here during the process of the next administration, the process, the promise means nothing, unless it is in writing. That is so crucial. So if you're meaningful, and if your intentions are to make this work and service the people in Ward F, as we say it should, and the city alike, all of these things that is being promised for the betterment, to service the community, must be in writing. A promise is not good enough, and there must be follow-up. So you have a compliance department that doesn't review compliance. So what good is it to make a promise? So what good is it to make a promise if somebody's not going to enforce that? That is crucial, that is crucial. And that's why so many developers have been, and I'm one of them, a developer, not one that wants to cheat the public, but to make sure that the local people and the local vendors as well. The local vendors deserve a part of this stuff, as well as the residents getting jobs. The educational portion of this is very important. And I'd like to say to Yvonne Bolzer, who mentioned earlier about the environmental issues, you see Ward F, for no other reason, I mean, there's ten of them, but for no other reason, has been plagued with contamination purposely, in many cases. So when we talk about doing special things for Ward F, it's time. Because we have suffered and lived amongst contamination for so long, there is a thing called environmental injustice. So to make it right, to make environmental justice come to light, these are things that you must make happen and you must enforce. And you have to do that systematically and put that in writing as well. And I just wanted to say to Yvonne, that there are processes that you go through with development, and environmental phases, or Phase One is one of them. So it is the responsibility, not only of the city, but the developer and the partnership, to make sure that contamination is cleaned up and cleaned up to a level that is safety. And then the only way that's going to happen, and we know it's going to happen, and we can make sure it happens, even after you leave, is to make sure you put something in place like that community committee. You have to involve the community in some way to make sure that this stuff is reinforced, because without it, it means nothing. I just want to say that. And I just want to commend this administration, I want to commend you, counsel. I hope that we have a nine-zero vote at the end of this, that this process goes through, because it is time. It's long overdue, and as Bruce Austin said, this is a start, and I hope that it is the beginning of something that is going to spark other development in our area, which is long overdue for development and revitalization. And finally, in closing, I would like to say, Michelle Massey is with the Jackson Hill program up there. She is a vast resource. She has knowledge about the neighborhood, she's a resident, ought to be in this mix, ought to be in this mix with, with decisions that are being made on behalf of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, June. Next speaker? You could just state your name, sir?
Hi, my name is Bernard Shivers. Bernard Shivers, from B's Construction. I mean-
Can you spell your last name for me?
S H I V E R S.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I should have spoke first, because everybody said everything. First of all, I want to commend the committee, because I'm not one to come up and speak too much, but this is big. This is real big.
So can you lift the mic up?
You hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. This is real big. I know before we had, y'all had many excuses why you couldn't get black minority contractors the jobs, we don't have the qualifications, we're not qualified, we can't bond, and all these things. Now you have contractors that built up where we're able to do these things now. B's Construction, Barnes Construction, and there's other constructions, you know, and it's like, we're here, we're Ward F, and we love where we're brought up at, because I was born and raised here also. So, to give us the jobs, is to give the community the jobs. We're showing you by action that it can be done. I'm not speaking in words, I'm speaking in what I live. We gave, or we're still giving our community jobs. And they're doing the job. People want work. They just want you to believe in them, somebody to give them a shot, somebody to give them a chance.
It's an important topic again, for everybody who's-
Topic about the hub.
Just keep it on the ordinance.
On the ordinance, that's what I'm getting at. Bringing the hub here, give them work. And that's important. And I want to applaud y'all for doing that, and I hope we get a nine-zero, make it short, sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, Michelle Massey?
Good evening, counsel. Councilwoman, my condolences as well. I was not aware. Hi. I just wanted to come up, I'll be pretty brief. Jackson Hill Main Street Management Corporation is very excited about the possibilities here before us with this building. The, I, I agree with several things said this evening. And I think some people may have a misconception that there are going to be jobs in the building, but the opportunity is actually going to be outside of the building.
That's right.
So I said recently in a meeting, that, and if you're just going to put one building there, that's not going to be the solution. It's got to be done, obviously holistically, we have to attack several things, we have to address the rest of the drive. And we're going to need to bring in businesses which will provide jobs and needed businesses for the community, not just, we suffer with duplicate businesses. So bringing this building to the district will, quite frankly, add more foot traffic during the day. And that's where the possibilities will lie, in creating and bringing soliciting businesses to come to that area, as well as sustain better those that are there. Because we have several businesses that have stuck on that drive for quite a long time in the area of that hub, and they're due as well. So, good luck, and thank you.
You know, can I say something?
You're going to help with that, right, Michelle?
You know?
You're going to help with that, right?
I absolutely will.
Yeah, I just want to comment, you know, myself, I think none of the council members in this room, not against, none actually, against city annex building in hub area, period. But even myself, I support a hundred percent, because I believe that businessmen, if we bring up the city annex build in the hub area, it'll help the economic improvement and the job creation.
Yes.
But as a councilman, how much cost to taxpayer, we have to look at it. So not issues that the project to build the Martin Luther King Drive, we support it. Let me repeat one more time, we, I support it a hundred percent. But I try to make sure, this council makes sure that we pay, we spend as little much as we can for the taxpayer dollar, we try to maximize import, economic input to job creation. That's what is issue. So a lot of speaker mentioned to that, support the city annex. Yes, we are. But key issue is that, how are we going to do? What is the bottom line cost of taxpayer, how we can protect the taxpayer? That's what it is. I just want to make sure, okay? But I support it a hundred percent. But issue is that, it's a lease agreement, okay?
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Next speaker, Esther Whitner?
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak on the MLK annex, not from the perspective of its location, which I support. As a matter of fact, when I met with Greg Carrato, I mentioned that to him, that I thought when he asked me that question, is that not correct, Mr. Carrato? Do you recall our conversation? He probably doesn't. No, all I said was that I supported it, and we had that discussion.
In fact, when, when we left, when we, we left, I thought you were in a hundred percent.
And I still am. And I still am.
Esther, go ahead.
All right. The question becomes, as I read the new ordinance for the MLK annex, I saw that it was reduced in size, reduced in amount, same per square foot, but I believe there was new language in there regarding the environmental issues and how we were responsible for that. So last week when-
The language was not new. It was, it's the same language. There's no-
The environmental language was in the first one?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, well then I didn't know, I didn't remember it, I thought that it came up in the second one. So when Councilwoman Levaro, this week, had Greg Carrato forward the PowerPoint to me, which Greg Carrato did, I asked about the soil testing, and if soil testing would occur prior to the city signing on a lease, on an agreement with the developer. And I pretty much received twice the answer, which was, we are responsible as a city for the cleanup, which I understand. What I am not clear about is the sequence of events, in terms of when the testing will take place. Well, I should clarify that, because Mr. Carrato did, did say that it would, it would happen after ratification and during the, the construction. I have that here. Environmental testing will proceed in the same manner as it does with all city construction projects, after the agreement is ratified and before and during construction. But I feel that the soil testing should occur prior to signing on the agreement. And the reason I feel that way is because the way the contract is written, whether the project is ready or not, I think it's the fifth year, whether the building, the facility is ready, we start paying our rent, we start paying on that. So if we find that there is problems or contamination with the soil, and would have to stop the project and halt the project, so that we can start doing some type of remediation and pay for that, then essentially, we would be paying for both things at the same time. Not giving us the breadth that we would need to maybe, if they do find contamination there, not saying that they will, but given the history of this area of the city, it's possible. I don't know what was there before. It's a serious concern. I think the, the community needs to know, or should know, what's going on in their community prior to this being signed on. So I think that the council should first see to it that that soil is tested, and find out what's in there. Because I'll cite an example, up in Braddock Park. It's a county issue, where they were fixing a park several years ago, they hired a contractor. And as they did the, as they were building the park, they found contamination in the soil. So they had to put the project on hold until they could clean the soil. The contractor wanted his money. He had put aside his year worth of work, or whatever he did, and what ended up happening was, the county paid or bought out the contract to give it to the contractor, cleaned the soil, paid for that cleaning, and then had to put out a new bid. So this was money that was spent that we didn't have to do. And given that funds are tight all over, and this would not only affect the community around the area, but would affect all taxpayers within the city, I think it would be prudent to first test the soil, look at that, make a determination, and that's not to guarantee that once you do a quality soil testing, that they're going to start construction and they might not find something, you know, if the, if the testing comes out clean. But you need to do your due diligence to make certain that you're trying to figure out whether or not this is viable to do. Because if we have to pay for both items at the same time, I think it would be too costly for, for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, to the administration, you addressed the question of paying twice.
Yes, yes. Let's, let's talk about the environmental issue again. Although, Council President, do you want to ask me a question directly about paying twice, or shall I just give you the answer about the environmental? Because it's-
Well, the envi-
Environmental testing.
If it's being tested, if contamination is found, and then, if I understand correctly-
Yeah.
The idea that delays would then cause the project to be delayed, and so if we're paying for rent, or lease, leasing, and then we're not in the building, but then we have to pay for leasing as well outside of the building.
Good, I'm glad you repeated it, sir, I understood what you wanted me to talk about. Okay, so what we have had, we have, it could happen, that could happen, except that in, in our experience, in the city's experience, that the two projects that we're building, that we're just completing now, which is the New West District and Linden Avenue, the DPW Building, which is an eighty million dollar project, as opposed to this project, which is only twenty million, much grander scale, we found contaminants on both properties that we had not anticipated in the pre-testing, that did not delay, did not delay the construction of those two buildings. Other things delayed the construction of those two buildings, as you know, but they did not substantially delay either projects. And I don't expect that to happen here. In fact, across the street, there's construction going on in that neighborhood. We expect that the environmental issues will probably be the same, probably underground storage tank, maybe lead from lead paints that were used in buildings that were there many years ago. So we don't anticipate that this would slow down the project at all.
In other words, you wish, right?
At the same time, the, as the business administrator reminds me, the, the Brandywine expects to build the building in eighteen months, but has built in extra time, two years, it's not five years, it's two years when the payments begin. So that if there is an issue that needs to be addressed, there's time in the, in the schedule to address it. And then, finally, I'd say that, that the, we don't want to test it beforehand, you know, I've told the council that before, but the public who hasn't heard that tonight, I'd like to say it again, if we test it beforehand, we'd still be in the same position, because the city would test the, the, the ground, and we'd have to remediate it. We wouldn't leave it if it was, we wouldn't just walk away.
Right, yes. Once you test it, you're going to have to clean it up.
Going to have to clean it, exactly.
If it's contaminated, we have to clean it up no matter what.
Exactly. And then add this, if we do not go with the third party, if we don't go with Brandywine, we bonded ourselves, we pay a down payment immediately, the city would have to budget a down payment immediately, and so you pay now, not two years from now, and then you start paying the bond in the next budget year. So you have to take it within all of those parameters to make that decision. So that's a very good question.
And can you, can you just express one more time that you've allowed enough time before the lease is due for possibility of things happening?
I, I will. Thank you for-
Could you do that one more time, please, so that can be clear?
Brandywine, Brandywine has committed to an eighteen-month construction schedule. That means the building will be built in eighteen months. But the payments, our lease payments, don't begin for two years, so it's got a built-in cushion.
Thank you, thank you.
You will.
Thank you.
That was a very good question, thank you.
Mr. Harmon? Mr. Harmon?
Wayne Harmon. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
My condolences to you, Councilwoman Coleman, for your loss.
Thank you.
My name is Wayne Harmon, business owner, contractor, and I own several buildings on Martin Luther King Drive. I think it's a good idea for the hub to have the annex, the city hall annex, for more than one reason. It's going to bring a lot of things, but I'm not going to repeat what every other speaker said, why they approved it. I am going to address Councilman Young's concern about the taxpayers spending X amount of dollars. If it costs X amount of dollars that the taxpayers are out on the hook for, what is that worth in terms of the human life that we are losing every day? In addition to that, what does it cost to incarcerate people because they don't have a job if the hub never gets built? That's number one. Number two, is to the councilman from Ward B. You said you'd like to see the hub built with union labor, the new city hall management, union labor. Well, just so you know, I don't know if you were around, the hub was built not with union labor, but with contractors from the area, and from contractors from everywhere. It was not union labor. It would have not been cost-effective if it was union labor. I just want to say, I had an issue with the union at one point. In nineteen seventy-one, my dad told me to go and get into the electricians' union. And when I went down, they had a box on the application, it said race. And I said to the instructor, why is this box here for race? He says, well, everybody has to answer it. I said, no, Congress outlawed that box for race a long time ago, the prior year. And I know- And I know by me talking to the instructor and telling him that in front of everybody that was there, I was not gonna get accepted into the union, thank God. Because now I am running my own business, I have people working, and I'm doing what a lot of guys dream about doing, including owning property on MLK and various places. So I say it's a good idea for this annex to be built with non-union labor, and I urge the council to put language in the bill that does not include union labor. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Jeff Kapowetz.
Good evening. My condolences just heard tonight, and I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
I'm not going to read the letter into, that I sent to you and the local board. As my letter stated to you, I had concerns of how this project proceeded. You know, listening tonight, it's kind of a sad statement. Every time there's a project that comes up in front of this city, and there's some opposition to how it's, you know, proceeding, and that goes to all the previous administrations, including this one, the call goes out, and this place is filled with people who desperately want jobs, who desperately want their neighborhoods to be as nice as downtown, who want the same amenities. It's a sad statement. They're promised over and over again, and it doesn't happen. If it's not written in the document, it can't be enforced. With regards to the issues that I brought up in my letter to you, I have concerns with how the language in the lease is written regarding the beginning rental date. The actual lease in the definition page states that the basic rent commencement date shall mean the earlier of the date of substantial completion or February 1, 2017. Regardless of what Mr. Carrato would say to you, and I am sure that the attorney for the city will verify what I say, is that that statement in the lease binds the city to a commencement date to pay rent on February 1, 2017. Regardless if this place is built or not, there is nobody in this room that could tell me that they can guarantee that this place will be completed then. I've been sitting, I have done commercial real estate since 1987. I can tell you countless times, I have done construction deals, land development deals that involve contamination. The moment that somebody puts a shovel in the ground, all bets are off. I can't tell you if there's contamination on this site or not. But what I can tell you, as you're, you are the representatives of the people of Jersey City, the taxpayers, it's your obligation to make sure the language is clearly stated that commencement date shall not mean the date of substantial completion or February 1, 2017. The language should be changed to say, when the certificate of occupancy is issued by the City of Jersey City, and the city can now occupy the building, that is when the rent starts. To do otherwise, to do otherwise is a gamble. And you never gamble with a real estate deal, because if this is taken to court, the lease governs not the conversations, not what's put on the record. Am I correct? Ms. Monahan?
Yes, you also misquoted me, Jeff. I didn't say that. It absolutely binds the city. That's the only way that that lease would be able to be financed by a bank. So then the council, when a council approves the agreement tonight, they bind the city to make that payment in two years. What I did say was that there was some cushion in the construction schedule. Does that mean that I can guarantee that the building will be built in two years? No, that's right. I cannot guarantee that. But what does the city have? We do have a surety bond. So if the construction is not going correctly, we can step in and take over that construction to get it finished.
Any land development deal?
So, just to be clear, just to be clear, if the city didn't do it this way, and I have read your letter a couple of times, thank you for sending it to us, the, and we did discuss it at the local finance board meeting today, this morning. So if the city were not to go this route, and if the city were to bond, and we were to go out to bid like we just did on these two other major projects that I just mentioned, we would begin paying immediately. And if you look at the analysis that I've left out, you'll see that the city would actually pay more at the, by the end of the term than in, by bonding it than by agreeing to this. So if we were hypothetically, not in the building, in two years, it would still cost us less, the city less, than if we bonded it and went out and bid it.
Well, then, I would suggest that as every private developer in this city, this state, and this country, who enter a contractual agreement, they have a due diligence period. I would suggest to you that a 60- to 90-day due diligence period should be incorporated before you institute the bond to test the soil to make sure that there's not an issue. It does not affect this deal by being prudent. Everybody who puts money down on a deal wants to make sure that they can close and build and occupy. I don't understand.
That only unduly, the administration's view is that will unduly delay the project.
How could 60 days delay the project?
By definition, you just said if we wait 60 days, it'll be 60 days later.
Market conditions change, interest rates change?
It also, well, the biggest thing will be design. No one is going to design the building if it's contingent on a 60- to 90-day waiting period.
You're talking about a two-month period to make sure that you do not fall into a crater.
As I said earlier, the city just completed two projects. They were larger than this project.
Let me ask you a question. Those two projects, let me ask you a question. Those two projects were delayed.
Jeff, please direct your comments directly to us.
Okay, I apologize, Council President. Those two projects were delayed because environmental issues, correct?
No.
No, they were not. They were not.
They were not?
No, that's what I said earlier, they were not.
No.
There were absolutely substantial delays, but they were related to other events. There was a change in design in both buildings and-
Natural changes.
And there was, we had trouble with the contractor at the West District. In fact, we are actually applying liquidated damages against them because they've been so late.
Yeah, I would say, this presentation and the comparative analysis illustrates that when the city builds, what the typical build schedule looks like and how the delays and additional costs incurred, how, that's almost inevitable at some level.
But there's so, I apologize.
The comparative analysis shows that there's a substantial benefit to the taxpayers of Jersey City by using this lease-to-own option versus substantial. It's not even, it's not even close to like-
Local finance.
Well, what I'm talking about is protections, certain clauses that should be incorporated.
I don't, I don't understand why you would want to commit to a date certain unless you know that you can actually occupy.
We know, so with regard to the clause around environmental contamination and things of that nature, I think that he was fairly clear about it, that it's the commitment to move forward and build a City Hall Annex in the area.
I don't disagree with that, Councilman.
So, but once we test it, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to remediate it anyway.
Absolutely. And I don't disagree with that.
We incur that cost either way, and we're gonna be committed to building.
No, Council President, you're misunderstanding me. I am not talking about the cost. I'm not talking about the cost. I am talking about the idea that you have a lease that says that you pay rent at a given date regardless if the building is capable of being occupied. If there's an environmental issue, you're absolutely correct. The City of Jersey City is responsible for cleaning up, and they should clean it up without hesitation. But it takes time to clean up before you can construct the project. So there should be certain language in this lease that states if that should happen, you don't start paying rent.
No, actually, that's not quite true. What is going to happen is we will start testing immediately. While the testing is being done, then they can start designing the building. The building hasn't been designed yet, so that can happen concurrently. So we do not want to make it happen in a row. We want to have this process going simultaneously.
Okay, excuse me, Jeff. The Councilperson Osborne, and then Councilman Young, yeah.
So I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, especially when you say the words "rent." But if you thought of the other way of financing this as a bond, right? So if we bonded, we'd start paying immediately.
Correct.
So this, this structure, this financial structure, quote-unquote "lease," but it's a buyback over, you know, think of it essentially as exactly the same as bond, it's just a different way of doing it, okay? We have two years before we have to start paying, whereas if we bonded, we'd have to start paying right away.
Right.
So I'm having a difficulty understanding exactly what your point, I don't mean that in a rude way, I'm just like, I'm not understanding what you're making is, because to me, it's from that particular argument perspective, it's a better deal to wait two years to start paying because of the risk than to start paying immediately if we bond.
Oh, no. Councilwoman, I am not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting to you is that there's an uncertainty of when, you don't think there's an uncertainty?
Actually, I agree with you, there is no certainty. Same way there's no certainty with the bond where we start paying.
No, no, let's get off the money side. Let's totally get off the money side. Forget if the city finances it or Brandywine finances it, forget all that. What I am saying is, my point is that you have a lease that says on February 1, 2017, you have to pay rent.
And the analogy is, you have a bond that says tomorrow you start, have to start paying.
That's right. That's the analogy.
That's the analogy, that's the point I'm making.
You know, Jeff?
Okay.
Council President?
I see what you're saying.
Hold on, hold on, we can't have everybody talking over there. We gotta do one at a time, okay? Because my caller is going crazy.
Right.
Okay, can I say something?
Councilman Young.
I'm the Council President. Councilman Young.
Hey, good. You know, we're talking about Linden Avenue Project and the New West District Project. With all those change order, Linden Avenue Project costs is $402 per square foot. New West District costs for, with all the change order, $398 per square foot. But City Hall Annex Building, without any change order, costs a taxpayer $439.
Okay, let's keep the-
So your excuse, if we build, costs more is not matched what you present to the City Council.
I'm not sure, do you understand me? You want to respond to the statement, or?
Um, yes.
It costs more per square foot for one project versus another?
Yes. So if you look on, well, you may not have it up in front of you, but I'll just read it to you. The substantial difference between what you just said, which is, what you just said is that the price per square foot shouldn't be more now, they should be the same or less. I guess that's what you're saying, right? As compared to the West District and Linden Avenue. But the problem with that is, those projects were bid years ago. So the bid was in, for the West District was 2009 and was awarded in 2011. And the same with Linden Avenue, the bid was awarded in 2011. It is now 2015.
See, let me ask this one, that I asked this. You know, they're both project, almost 20% to change order. So you just told us, period of a couple of years time, their construction cost went up 20%, more than 20%, that's what you mean?
And right on the crisis?
I mean, it just finished the both project.
I don't know what you're asking me, Councilman.
No.
But if you look at, if you looked at comparisons per square foot, the price of this building matches what we just built, and it is guaranteed. This price is guaranteed, there will be no change orders.
Right.
So this, so what are you suggesting? If we go out to bid, if we go out to bid, Councilman, what will happen is, we will not be able to guarantee the price. We will not know what the price is going to be at the end. That's the point of this analysis. That's the, that's the alternative, Councilman. You can, you can, you can say, no, we don't want the third party to build the building, and we're gonna bond, and we're going to bid it out, and the consequences are what this analysis shows. You will not know what the price will be. Can I ask a question? Wade, you're coming up with the price for this building based upon other projects? Is that where this number came from?
Brad, I apologize. The Council President, I'd like to know, the price for this building, did it come from previous projects? Did it come from the developer who's going to build the project? Where did this number come from?
Yes, the number for the price of the building was prepared by the developer.
So, and there was no independent, Council President?
Yes, there was.
And there's no independent verification that this number is market rate?
Do you want to speak to the independent verification?
Yes, there's two ways, two ways. One, from the city's own experience, which is what the analysis shows that's in the pamphlets that we've handed out. We also, the city asked our construction managers, Epic, to look at the pricing of the building, and they concurred that it was appropriate.
Epic Management is our construction managers.
Oh, you're in house?
Yes.
Okay.
So they've reviewed this and concurred with the numbers. And local finance board, the Councilwoman has reminded me.
Because it's a great project, the local finance board says it's a great project.
What about the work letter, Councilman President? The $50 a square foot work letter, or $2,250,000 to build out, a work letter is basically, how this project is working is that the developer is building a shell, and you're getting four walls, floor, and stubbed out, and the city has to fit it out, they're getting an allowance to fit it out for bathrooms, offices, lighting, electric. And my question is, is how do you know that you can live within the budget of $50 a square foot? And if not, isn't the taxpayers going to pay?
That's a good question, that's a good question. So let me ask how that was determined. Working with the developer, we, the city's team requested that the furnishings built out, as you put it, be in the middle of what is the national standard. So as I understand, the national standard is $30 up to 70.
Right.
So in, on behalf of the taxpayers, we didn't want 70, but at the same time, we didn't want to have, you know, women, infants, and children going to the cheapest thing that we could buy. So we picked the number in between. And that's how, that's how 50 was, so it's based on national standards, and it's the middle of the national standard.
Is that a number that is firm as the construction cost, that once the building is built, that is firm, that there'll be no cost overruns in that?
Well, only if, only if the city requests things that are more expensive than that.
All right, but right now, there's a schedule for that, okay. I'm a little confused about one item. Is this, the application to the local finance board was for bonding and of 17-
17.5.
Yeah, 17.575.
19.7.
19.7, and then another 19, another 19.7 for the lease purchase, totaling of $35 million?
No, 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 no. The, the price, the price is 19.7, and by, by the time you finish paying the mortgage, it will be 30...
35, with all the income.
Yeah, 35 million.
So, the city, the city is actually, here's where I'm confused. The city is bonding for this?
No.
Okay.
No.
You're not?
We're not.
No bonding, so?
No bonding, not our part. I tell you, avoiding the first initial payments, and not assuming the, uh...
So, you went to the finance board, basically requesting to build, you know, to go into a lease for the building, and the private developer is then going out to find their own financing?
Yeah, let, let me be clear, that we went to the finance board, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, and I could be wrong, that we went to the finance board, and it was suspect whether we had to actually do that. But we did that because we wanted to provide a level of assurance and confidence to folks that it was actually vetted, um, and that, because there was a lot of information out there about whether or not this was a, an allowable or a proper approach, and whether this lease-to-own, um, approach that we were taking, whether that was something that was, uh, above board and all of that. And so, we did that with the intention of having it scrutinized at the state level, and getting that scrutiny back to be able to say that, yes, this is, this is an innovative approach, it's not done everywhere, granted, um, but it's saving the taxpayers, uh, by, my rating, 10 million?
5 million.
How much?
7 million.
7 million, $7 million over the life of the project, which is, I mean, tremendous, I think, for the people. And it gives us assurances of a project that's gonna be built and developed, um, in a timely manner, as opposed to, or, or greater assurances, let me say that, because we don't have 100% assurances, but knowing our own track record as a city, it gives us greater assurances that we're gonna actually build out here, and, um, not just be paying rent all of our life, but be able to actually own this property after 25 years. And so, I think this is a great project, I've already kind of said my piece on this, I think, uh, I'll just vote when it comes down to the end.
Why is in year six, a 26% increase in the rent? I understand the 2.5 every other year as a normal operating procedure, but 26% bump in year six, if it's a lease-to-purchase, is the, excuse me, is the developer getting an adjustable mortgage, or a balloon mortgage?
There's no adjustable mortgage here. Mr. Carrato would like to address that?
No, it's not, it's not. This is a good question, uh, because it, it appears confusing. It isn't a bump up in year six. The city asked the developer, when the developer was going out to get financed, to have the first five years flat, so that, um, moving from our, our current rental, um, leases would be the same or less. So, the, so what the, when the, when the developer went out to get the financing, they got the financing, but they flattened out the first five years at the city's request.
And I, I'm assuming that the 4.6% is prevailing rate today, but if it goes up, we pay as additional rent, that extra interest?
That's...
That's right, set at the, at the time that the agreement is executed. So, when we close, now, we'll know. It doesn't, doesn't change in the future.
All right. Well, I, I will suggest that in the future, there should be a little more public information and public meetings to discuss these issues prior to council meetings or submissions to the state. I don't believe, you know, I've had these questions, Councilman, you know I've had these questions for a while, I've addressed the mayor of these questions, and there should have been a public hearing to work out the issues.
We did that.
When?
We had it open for discussion, we had meeting, we went, we went to Ward F community, to the churches, we had three or four community meetings at the Bethune Center, we had community meetings.
I apologize, I apologize, I didn't see that.
I'm sorry, do you live in Ward F?
No, I live in Ward A.
Can we be free from speaking out, please, for respect to council?
Sure.
And the people who are speaking?
I apologize, Councilwoman, I did not know that, uh, those meetings were, uh, there. Uh, I would have liked to have attended them, so I could have listened to the issues, and had my questions answered then.
Okay, we'll remember that in the future. We wanted to involve, we wanted to involve the residents of Ward F who were going to have to...
Be impacted directly by it.
Around that directly, who were gonna be impacted directly.
I, I, I apologize.
We tried to involve the residents of Ward F who were going to be impacted by that project, and that is the reason why they, it was distributed to residents of Ward F. Sorry.
Well, you know, and I, and I appreciate that, because, you know, the community should be involved, the stakeholders, but I think that, you know, it is a citywide issue, and it would be nice to have a general meeting. Um, you know, I, I appreciate the time and being able to have my questions answered. Uh, I'm just gonna wait to finish up by saying that, uh, you know, this area needs development, this area needs infusion. I sat, I mean, I've sat many times with Earl Morgan and talked about Jackson Avenue, the good times, the bad times, you know? I sat with Melissa Holloway, the Councilman for the area, when she sat and fought with, um, New Jersey Transit to make sure the light rail was on the street, and the US Postal Service just wanted to do a warehouse there. I agree with the, the people who came up here that stated, if you're just going to build this one building and hope that this solves the problems, it's not going to do anything. It has to be a much greater vision and incorporation of city assets to make this area come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Mia Skanga.
All right, okay, Mia Skanga, good evening, and my condolences to Councilwoman Diane Coleman. Um, I want to mention a couple of things, I'm gonna try not to repeat what's already been said. One thing I'm gonna bring to the attention of the members of the, of the public here, you know, they say...
Man, man, if you just back up a little bit, there you go.
You know, there's that old cliche, the devil is in the details. If you read the ordinance, which is online on the city's website, you will find that the contractor has already been selected, okay?
Can I just, I have that underlined, I would like for them to address that for you, because...
Okay, let me finish what I have to say, then we can have all the questions at the end, right? Because I'm sure everybody wants to go home, okay?
Great.
Um, it's on, it's in the ordinance, okay? The company is called Skanka, S-K-A-N-S-K-A. If you have your phone, you can look it up, all right? I'm just gonna read a few quick facts from their website, which I just pulled up. They are headquartered in New York, okay, they have 39 offices, they have more than 9,600 US employees working every day. They're big, okay? They have more than 400 lead accredited professionals, they are the sixth largest heavy contractor by revenue worldwide. We're not talking small potatoes here. I've been going to council meetings for over 25 years, over 25 years, and I've been here with the tax abatement meetings, and people are begging for jobs, please, please approve the tax abatement so we can get local jobs, they never got the local jobs. It's criminal, and I agree with Jeff, it's very sad, I, people need local jobs, you're not gonna get it from Skanka, they're union, they've got their own people. Their first thing they're gonna say is, we can't turn around this building in this timeframe if we use local people, we have to use our own people, that way we know what they can do. They're gonna bring in their own teams of people, there will be no local construction jobs, I can guarantee it, because they're gonna have a tough timeframe, we're talking less than two years, this is March. Rent starts February 1st of 2017, that's less than two years, and then I hear tonight that they haven't designed the building yet? I'm thinking, oh my God, I can't believe it! How could you, if you didn't design the building, how could you know $50 a square foot is gonna be enough to put in the bathrooms, the, uh, the walls, the cubicles, and the whole... And then who pays? We pay! And this whole analysis is bogus, because it says, no change orders, no change orders. We already had a major change, you started out at 60,000 square feet in August, now we're down to 45,000, that's a change order! All right? And the police department, they're going to Marion Gardens, from what I hear, that's not a done deal, because the feds want market rate rent, and the city doesn't want to pay it, so we could get another change order. We're already starting out at top dollar, top dollar! And, and we have a, who, who would sign up for a project where if you built something, I'm sorry, if you built something, you can't move in until there's a certificate of occupancy issued? But there's no mention of it having to be done, most people go into a contract, and they insist, once the COO is issued, they move in. So, you're putting the taxpayers at risk for a building, you don't know what the, the quality of the land is, and of course, the city's gonna have to, once you open up, open up the parking lot, you're gonna have to remediate it. You're dealing with a February 1st deadline, which we're opposed to, and you're not gonna hire any local contractors, because it's Skanka, they're bigger than most of the contractors who built the Jersey City waterfront! And when they did tax abatements, they never even told you who the contractor was, you assumed it was Tishman or whoever, here they have it right in the ordinance! So, when you vote for that ordinance, you're voting for Skanka, that's who you're voting for. And they're bringing in their 9,600 people to do the job, because they gotta get it done in the timeframe, and if you look at the ordinance, everything is marked off in pencil, which is part of the ordinance, this is, this is part of the $50 build out, this is part of the 50... I read that, and I thought, what have they given us? A bunch of bricks? And some air conditioning units on the roof? And they even mentioned, they only give me 20 doors! 20 doors! What's 20 doors in an office building? You know, it's like, they're giving you nothing, we're gonna pay top dollar, the only good thing, the way I see it, and this is driven by politics. You know, they're gonna tell people, you got local jobs, you'll pop more money in, you'll have more people in the area. I work right now at Rockefeller, near Rockefeller Center, it's right across the street from me. You know, I'm like everybody else, I wanna get home at a reasonable time, I bring my lunch half the time, if I eat out, I run down the street at a food bar, pick up some food, take it to my office, sit in my office, and then I go home, okay? That's it. You know, if I meet someone for dinner afterwards occasionally, that's fine, more than likely it's another part of the city. I'm sure city employees don't go out and eat lunch every day, and they're gonna do their shopping. They don't, they do their job, just like I do my job. And then I come home, and we have plenty in my neighborhood, or, you know, even up where I am now, I buy locally, right? So, there's not gonna be this huge infusion by having 200 people who work there during the day. It's unfortunate, but it's true, it's not enough mass. This should be part, like Jeff said, of a plan. And hiring a firm like Skanka is not gonna create any local jobs, and that's the really sad part of it, because everybody's here thinking they're gonna hire locally. They'd have a better shot at getting a local job with some training, even if it does take longer than February of 17, if the city did bid it out. And this whole bogus analysis is based on no change orders. You already had a major change order, you're gonna have plenty more change orders, especially if you haven't even designed the building! And the clock is ticking! You know, it's just, it's the nature, it's the nature of government, it's, it's also poor planning by the city, and as for paying for bonds, there's a, there's a financial vehicle called bond anticipation notes. You can float those to pay for your soft costs, which includes the architects, the accountants, whatever, the engineers, before you actually start doing major, major construction. And the city gets a pretty good rate, because supposedly we got a better, we have a better credit rating. So, you're not gonna create any local jobs here, any construction jobs, and as for people going out to lunch every day, mm, doubt it. That's, and then, we're gonna get stuck paying double rent in February when the building is incomplete, because they're not gonna be able to allow any workers, office workers, to move in there until there's a certificate of occupancy, because they have to play by their own rules. And also, people, these aren't gonna be new jobs, they'll just be jobs like, you know, when they built the waterfront, oh, we'll get all those jobs, when Goldman Sachs came here, they brought their own people. The city's gonna bring their own people. You know, not to say people don't leave, but they may not necess, I don't know how much turnover there is in these particular positions, but it's not gonna, you can't count on that to open up any jobs, whether it's at MLK, or whether it's on Central Avenue, or, or Gerald Square, it's the same. You have the same shot at that job, no matter where it is in the City of Jersey City, it's, those are the same jobs.
Okay, Mia, your, your point is well taken about the jobs.
No, let me, okay...
Well, other people spoke about jobs as well, I asked them to stay on topic.
Well, we have to counter it, okay? With some reality here.
Your point is well taken, let's move on.
Yeah, I know, because it's not what you wanna hear, so that's why you're cutting me off. No, no, it was fine when it was what you wanted to hear, Councilman.
Mia, other people spoke about jobs, and I asked them to stay on topic, as well.
All right. So, and then my other concern, is a big concern, which can cost us millions, is the $50 a square foot, when you're getting a shell, and you're paying top dollar for a shell. So, I think this could come back to haunt the taxpayers big time. It's being rushed, because he wants to get it done so, so the mayor could run around saying, I did this innovative, whatever, but of course, if it blows up, and we end up paying double rent or major cost overruns, that's the other side of the coin, we'll make that an issue as well. So, it's all about the timing before an election, and we know that, we know that, and it's gonna cost us dearly, and that's why we're opposed to it. It's not about, it's on MLK, that's great, but be prudent, because it's taxpayers' dollars. And also, personally, I think the city could have easily floated their own bonds and built it themselves. Just hire a good construction management company to run the project, that's all. Thank you very much.
You name it, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Paul Byrd.
Paul?
Paul Byrd.
Byrd?
B-Y-R-D, thank you. I'm a resident of Ward F, taxpayer. I'm glad that you're bringing this construction to Ward F. One, it's gonna bring about qual, a better quality of life, just that entity in itself, and that three, four block span will increase the quality of life there. Anything that has to do with repairing a sidewalk, just a sidewalk, so my grandmother can walk down the street without tripping, is good. If I have to spend another $45 or $50 on taxes to ensure that this building goes up, I'm with it. If it costs me another 500 a year, I don't care, because we have to start somewhere. You said you have the post office across the street, we have the hub there, we have Jackson Green coming up across the street, that's a starting point for Ward F. Everything has to have a starting point, so, between quality of life, and she's, they're talking about the soil, the soil all over Ward F, and probably Jersey City is contaminated, so the city, as you said, has to, you have to remediate that soil e, either way. Actually, it should be done regardless if the building goes up or not, because we have to, we're there. So, employment, we're gonna hope and pray that the city put clauses in this, that if not a lot of minority contractors and Jersey City residents get employment, a few do, so in doing this, we know that if 20 jobs come out of it, it's 20 more than we have now, whatever it is, is a plus, whatever it is, is a step up. And she made an insulting statement, saying, like, the city workers will be held hostage while they're there.
Right, that's right.
Like, huh, we live there every day.
That's right.
So, I don't have to call 911 to go to the store. I mean, it's bad, but it's not like that, it's not the Middle East.
That's right.
So, we need to... If we're there in Ward F paying taxes for twenty-five years, twenty tax abatements on the waterfront, then I don't mind paying an extra dollar to bring something to my community. We have an obligation to, well, you have an obligation to the taxpayer. I have an obligation to my kids and my grandkids, to make sure that I say the right thing up here to make you do something for them. They have to walk down that street ten years from now. And ten years from now, if the precinct is there, maybe that radius right there will expand larger and get out. Maybe there'll be no drugs in a ten-block area. Maybe, maybe fifteen-block area. Maybe everything's pushed to one side. Some people in the community will get the bad end of the stick because they gotta go somewhere. So when you push them away, but at least, when we have those Friday night jazz, whatever, and we come down there, and we're sitting out there, we don't have to worry about gunshots, because we got the precinct right there, we got our city building right there, the post office right there, we got homes going up at Jackson Green, we got Jackson Hill off Monticello doing the quality of life, cleaning streets. Things are happening in our community. And if we let someone from another community, I'm not gonna let someone in that house tell me how to set my table. I'm not gonna take up a lot of your time. This needs to be activated, it needs to be tabled, signed, started twenty years ago. That's, that's, that's how far behind we are. We don't have much in Ward F. But what we do have is hope that the last election will bring something better than we had the last four years. So we're counting on you to check the right vote. We're counting on you, because we voted for you. We put you there. And we asking you now to just give us something, something to build off. Now, she says Scanska's a big company, and they all gonna come in there like that. I'm a contractor, I know they're gonna come in there. But maybe, the city has had enough experience with the precinct and all these other places that they know how to deal with these big guys, to say, "You gotta break some bread somewhere. I don't care how you do it, but you gotta break some bread." So, with that, I'll leave you to check yes in that vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Next speaker, Philip Carrington.
Hi, Phil.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you.
See you too.
I want to thank the city council for bringing this project as far, as far as it has been, or it is going. I'm very pleased to see it. I'm proud of you all for doing that. If you have done something wrong, as you know, I'm not bought, so I condemn everybody. I'm not afraid of anyone, I'm not bought by anyone, I say what I have to say. This project is an extremely good project, if anyone knows anything about building. Even if the count, even if the city has to start paying rent in two years, it is still a good project. Because no one is gonna build anything without guarantees. If you wanna continue to condemn, or you'll make comparisons, well, let's make comparisons. This building was built X amount of years. About eighteen years ago, they spent two million dollars just to fix the roof. When you bought the buildings, like, thirty thousand dollars back then. I bought a building for eighty-five thousand dollars on Oak Street. I wanna build a new building a couple of years ago, it cost me one-point-five million dollars to build the same thing. So when you start making these deceitful comparisons, then you're no different, is because they have malice in their mind. So let's be fair, let's play, stop playing games. You see, figures don't lie, but liars do figure. We need this building in Ward F. Because everybody had their share. Everything was built up everywhere. It's our time to get our share. So we, as we, as we said, there were meetings in Ward F. They got caught off-guard. See, 'cause white folks didn't wanna come in Ward F. Let's be fair, stop playing no games. So when they had meetings, the black community's, "I don't care, wanna come." So now you're saying, "Well, we didn't have the meetings." Well, we were stopped because we were told to have meetings. There was meetings in Ward F. Just like it's everywhere else. You see, last week, we were condemning, or speaking, in terms of forty apartment building, or whatever was going, in somebody's community. They came out in droves, because it's their interest. Wherever there is building, in everybody's community, that, that community come out in droves. And there are meetings in that community.
Phil, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, bring it into this ordinance, uh, I'm not quite sure where you're going, right now. Yeah. But you gotta bring it, bring it back to the ordinance here.
Alright.
Alright?
Alright, you got me. Alright, you know what?
Good line, you're a go-rapper.
Alright, you go. You know, I'm not gonna say anything. Only very, only very close to home, uh, it is important for this ordinance to go forward. It's important for this building to go forward. It's important for us to get our fair share. If you're gonna condemn any part of the building, let's, everything is pro and con. So if the numbers that are being given is wrong, then you need to bring your numbers. If ten dollars per square foot, or five dollars per square foot is incorrect, tell me what number would be fitted, and where you get your numbers from. Don't just condemn the numbers without giving a comparative, a comparative analysis. And that's what I'm hearing. So I'm saying that there is enough, there is a proper, uh, a proper, uh, how do I say? Architectural plan is a proper plan put together. And I have not heard anyone with different numbers to say where or how they would build the same building for less money, as they're trying to say. What they're basically trying to say, in osmosis, they don't want it in Ward F. That's plain and simple. It's just simply being deceitful. And I haven't heard anybody in the black community say that they do not want this building, and so we, we do need this building. And those who have a, a, a difference of opinion, let me base it on facts, and not just some long, drawn-out, silly conversation, or to make you look good, or make it appear as if you're so intelligent. The ordinance needs to be passed. I am Philip Carrington, that is my viewpoint.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Robert Artificio, and we're all talking about this annex. Now, I guess we do need the annex, and the annex seems to be okay, but I don't like where twenty-five years, we have to lease it, and we have to pay for any maintenance on the building. If we're leasing it, the owner of the building should be the one to pay for maintenance. If the plumbing is not working, if the roof is leaking, he should, not us. Now, this place here should be packed, with everybody here, because the council is saying this is good for the city. I don't think half of the people in the city know about this. And I think the council people should've had meetings with their constituents to say, "This is what we wanna do, and this is what it's gonna cost. Do you want this?" Because I don't think half the people know about it. And another thing which would make this thing very easy is, if you're paying over three million dollars a year, where we got these other offices and stuff, when you're gonna build this building, you're gonna have three million dollars every year. Take that three million dollars and throw it to pay off the building, and maybe in five, seven years, you might have twenty-one million dollars, and that building is done, and we don't have to worry about twenty-five years. It's furnished, everybody's in there, and we're done. And another thing that could be done, which I don't think it'll ever happen, is this should go on, let's say, the ballot, to let the people know of Jersey City, we wanna do this, and ask them if they want it. Because you're representing the people. And if you're doing it on your own and not talking to your constituents, that's a problem. And they don't know what's going on, and they might say, "No, we don't want it," or they might say, "Go for it." And that's something that should be addressed, because the council is just, I guess, siding with what the mayor is saying, and they're going along with it. There may be some people on the council that are against it, and it could be two, three, or four people, but if the majority is listening to the mayor, it gets done, and it's wrong. Because you're putting the taxpayers at risk, paying more money in their taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Reyes.
Hi, hi. I just have one question, that, is this covered by pay-to-play?
Covered by pay-to-play?
Yeah.
What's that? Gentlemen?
No, this is a part of a redevelopment agreement that Brandywine has with the JCRNA.
So this doesn't cover the pay-to-play laws? Okay.
Doesn't count as a contract.
I think, are you asking whether the contract is subject to pay-to-play?
Yeah, the whole thing is, does it, is it covered under pay-to-play or not?
Um, I would think it, it's not subject to pay-to-play? I would just think it would be, I...
Because so many companies are involved, some new companies are involved. I just want to know, is this agreement covered by pay-to-play or not?
It's not.
It is not? Okay.
What's the answer, Greg?
This is not, because this comes from the redevelopment agreement between Brandywine and the JCRNA. That's how Brandywine, uh, is involved in, in this, um, project. Thank you.
JCRNA has a pay-to-play, right?
Um, I believe pay-to-play rules do apply at the JCRNA as well. But I would have to get, consult with legal counsel there.
But I, I, because there's no C-271 form, the political...
I'm sorry, one more time.
There is no C-271 form, political contribution disclosure attached to this. So I just wanted to make sure that, that gets attached at some point. If JCRNA has it, you know, they should release it. Alright? For you guys.
Our professionals are telling us that pay-to-play does not apply in this transaction. Did you wanna speak to this, mister?
Yes, we're required to follow all the pay-to-play rules in who we hire.
Great.
Required to file, but it's not his part. When, when will they file it? When? When will they file it?
What was the question?
When will they file it? If they're required to file.
You filed your pay-to, your...
You know, you don't, what you do is, when you hire people, they have to fill out the forms, and you have to get forms from everybody you hire, saying that they have not done any, any of their, their contributions, and they're, they've done everything proper per the pay-to-play ordinance.
When you're hiring people?
When we hire the contractor, if I go hire a contractor...
Oh, contractors, yes.
If I go hire a contractor, general contractor, whoever I hire on the job...
But I think he's asking if, if, um, you...
Oh, yeah, we, we filed all our pay-to-plays, uh, documents as well.
Right, okay.
Alright, okay, that's one. But there's no C-271...
They're not attached, yes.
Aren't attached, okay? I just wanted to make sure that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Uh, Mathis Shablas, resident of, uh, Jersey City.
I'm sorry, it's Matthew?
Mathis.
Mathis?
Yes, sir. I know you've heard many opinions on, uh, this particular ordinance, and we're reaching a time now that, uh, it's very important for you to be prudent in your decision. Ward F is in dire need for an act of love. It's been neglected for so long, and other parts of our community, I know you heard this basically before, have been given nourishment. Um, I know residents came out and they expressed what they feel is needed in order to make this a, a good deal. But very rarely has anything been born without a struggle. It has always been about people participating and trying to make the process, and that's what we call democratic. So now, you've had all the information that I think that our community could supply to you, it's time for a vote. And I think, and many other people, especially Ward F, feel that you say, say yes. It's like quarter to nine, and I know Mr. Young and Mr. Biani, uh, Journal Square is generally safe. Downtown is generally safe. And that's because we have corporate America down here, we have strong police presence, and it's considered an area that don't have too much crime. But when I go home tonight, I have to walk down my street. Would you walk down my street tonight at nine o'clock with me? But you would walk down these streets? And that's the difference. It's parts of the city that needs help.
Yes, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay, and, and I understand that you have some objections, and that's alright. But be a part of the process for us to be successful. Don't tear us down, because some things ain't right from the get-go. Very rarely do you plow into the soil and not find rocks. And you still plant the seeds, and you fertilize it. And you do all the things to make it very prosperous so that it'll grow. So I'm asking you to become part of this process, and don't tear it down.
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, at this time, can you please vote yes?
That's good, thank you. That was a good response. Motion. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance?
Excuse me? In a gentleman?
We're gonna close the public hearing.
Yes, motion. Let me finish. I agree with you a hundred percent, and I agree with you a hundred percent. You know, I believe that, you know, when we talk about the Citylord Annex Building, before we talk about it, I would actually call the BA's office, why we spent three million dollars, went to open the citywide. Why don't we build our own? I even spoke with the BA, it's about time to have our own building. Even they talk about that they build the Citylord Annex Building, I was delighted to hear that. Even they talk about the hub, I even more delighted to hear that. Because that's the area need most help. Some people complain with maybe the inconvenience, message transportation rights, because nine ways, uh, railways, not all of the city of Jersey City. But I told them, because of that area need the help, as we as a people of Jersey, we gotta help each other. So probably you heard that tonight, people, people not favorable with that project, and especially not the project and the finance issue, or lease agreement. But none of the people actually bring up the location, you have to understand. So everybody wanna try support hub area to build Citylord Annex Building.
One point, Mr. Young.
Yes, but now...
And one point that I don't think that you're really getting.
But now...
For twenty-five years, in the last twenty-five years, the homeowners of F Ward...
Yes.
Right? Have contributed to the growth of the city.
Yes.
Through the depression, right? And you've had tremendous growth all over the city.
But, not to mention, you're completing a statement.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But now, our concern is that, we're gonna build the Citylord Annex with the hub, but how we gonna save taxpayers' dollars? So nothing more than that. Okay, so we all knows that it's gonna be, possibly impact the hub, create new jobs, it's gonna help the economic improvement area, that's why we support it. But, as I repeat on, one more time, under the disagreement, I cannot say yes.
But, Mr. Young, this process has been vetted by the state.
Motion.
You had your opportunity to speak, he was just responding.
Alright, okay.
We're gonna close the public hearing.
Alright, please vote yes.
Motion.
I have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Ramchow. On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President LaVaro.
Aye.
Motion carries nine-zero to close the public hearing for final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance Fifteen, Day Zero.
gonna be cost to taxpayer? How we can save taxpayers' dollars? Under the this lease agreement, really this lease agreement protect our taxpayer dollars, Jersey City? That's our concern. I brought this issue many, many times. I wish this admission come up amend some lease agreement probably I'm the first one say yes, but under the this, the lease agreement, I have a problem. Because I don't know you read or not, I read since almost six months, probably 20, 30 times.
So did you give them alter turn of their plan?
Listen to me. So now, they have an issue in this lease agreement. Even though we lease, we have no benefit to lease. So now, long story short, our concern is that we're gonna build the City of NS with the hub, but how we gonna save taxpayers' dollars? So nothing more than that. Okay, so we all knows that it's gonna be the parts we impact the hub, create new job, it's gonna help the economic impact that it does, that's why we support it. But as I repeat on one more time, under the disagreement, I cannot say yes.
But Mr. Young, this process has been vetted by the state.
Motion.
Okay. We had your opportunity to speak, he was just responding.
Okay.
We're gonna close the public hearing.
All right, please vote yes.
Motion.
I have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Ramchow. On the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young. Uh, Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President Lavoro.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to close the public hearing for final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-020. Councilperson Kajuski.
You know, this is very interesting because we've been going at this for about two months now and I don't think anybody can disagree that it's a good idea to put this project up in the hub. I think basically everybody's saying it's a good idea. Where we differing is the, how we're gonna do it, whether we're gonna lease to own or whether we're gonna bond and we're gonna have the city do the construction. We have an analysis in front of us where we're gonna save almost $7 million that we go by leasing to own. Not only that, I heard people say several times about, oh, we're gonna have to pay in two years. Well, if you bond, you have to pay right away. So we're gonna have to start paying and in the final analysis, you're gonna pay more money. But if you flip through the analysis to the next sort of table after that, when they talk about some of the city projects, they mention the West District and they say it took 12 years for the West District to get done. Well, I have a real good knowledge about the West District and I can remember when the West District roof was leaking and the water was pouring down onto the desk on the third floor. In Public Works, we'd go up there, take the ball out of the drainpipe, they said, oh, there's a ball up in the drainpipe, so we fixed it. The next rain, guess what? Flooded again. So we were told that the city wasn't gonna fix the roof because of the fact that we were building a new West District and I thought that was great, but that conversation occurred somewhere around 1974, '75 when I was a detective in a narcotics squad and my captain was saying, don't worry about the fact that your desk is getting wet. So it didn't happen. And 10 years later, when we got into the 80s and I happened to be working for the police director, Walter Adams, in the mid 80s, the same thing was on the table. We were gonna build in the West District. You know, there was gonna be money for it, there was gonna be bonding and everything else. Didn't happen. That in the middle 90s, when I was in planning and research as first as a captain and then as a deputy chief, same thing, we went all over the place. It didn't happen. So it's not 12 years, it's 40 years for the city to do construction on the West District and it's not done yet. So pardon me for being a little skeptical about how the city does construction, really. So I still believe that this is a great project for the hub, for the city, and I vote aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
So let me, let me just say like, I'm not gonna elaborate on it again.
Begin the mic.
We have, uh, let me just say, I'm not gonna elaborate on this project again. I already make my, I already make my comments and I think we've been having a lot of elaboration between the speaker and my colleagues on the council. So I think this project is great for Ward F and is gonna create jobs, I know that for a fact. And not only Ward F need project like this, we need project in different wards in the city. A, B, C, F, D, so we need to see more project like this and I support this and I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilperson Bajana.
All right, Virginia, you're gonna hate me, but I just want to let everybody know. Across the street, there's a big giant lot.
Mike.
That, uh, it was... It's on.
Get closer to it like this.
All right. Across the street, there's a big lot that the city owns. They bought it a few years back, they tore down the church and on this property, they were going to build an annex. Well, the lot's still sitting over there and they never built the annex. Then the city turns around, they sold 8 Erie Street, they sold 325 Palisade Avenue. Why? What Franny said was, you know, they don't take care of anything. I worked in the West District, I worked in the East District and it's the same thing over and over for 40 years of incompetency. Somebody brought up before incompetency in government, I don't know who said it, and it's so true. The fact is, it's the lack of management on the part of the politicians, the lack of management coming out of the office over there for 40 years and maybe times have to change and the people of Ward F have to get up and say enough is enough. Ward F should have been developed 20 years ago. But this is not gonna develop Ward F. You have to get the developers there, you have to have buildings put in, you have to bring in businesses and you have to do it the correct way. And believe me, this project here is gonna cost the taxpayers a lot of money and I think the city should have built it, but it should have been built with supervision and competency, not the way things have been done for the last 40 years. We saw that beautiful building at 8 Erie Street, what a shame. It's unbelievable. So I'm voting no. I'm all for Ward F. No, wait a minute. I'm all for Ward F development. I work down there, I know a lot of people there, but the people in the community have to get together and demand that certain things are done and they have to get leaders there that push to get things done.
Councilperson Young. Please, everybody be respectful of each of the council members as they speak.
What?
I said, be, I'm talking to the audience. Try to back you up, which...
You know, fact is very simple. You need the furniture in your house. So instead of go furniture store, buy a furniture, you go to rent stores, pay every month. So if anybody say to us, rent is cheaper than buying, that's wrong attitude. That means something, there are problem over here. And also, if you look at this one, have an issue, really serious issue. Even I support that annex to City of in the hub area, I really delighted to hear that, but under this lease agreement, I guarantee it's gonna be taxpayer extra millions, millions dollars. I guarantee our BA ops come up City Hall and the discount continue ask more money. I guarantee. This is wrong. As we say, we not even have a blueprint, we not even have a detailed architecture drawing yet. And which way we look at it, we gotta start to pay rent February 1st, 2017. Then what is the sense to have a lease? Let me ask you this. New build condos you wanna buy or rent? You signed the contract as of February 1st, 2017. When you look at the place, it's not even ready to move in condition. And if you landlord ask you pay the rent, how many people gonna pay rent? I'm questioning, but we have attitude. It's not my money, I don't care, so let's pay. Sounds like they Brandywine Company build the City of NS Building as a charity, actually giveaway. It's not. They are profit corporation, they built for they make money, but why City of just taxpayer take risk? Meantime, they have a risk zero. Every risk come to our shoulder. Once we do win, even though they do poor job, they create concrete here and there, we cannot go back to them ask repair. We, as a taxpayer, the city have to pay for fix. That's why I called cheap man lease. So under this lease agreement, I cannot say yes. So I clearly say that protect the taxpayer and our future of Jersey City, I say no.
Councilperson Osborne.
So initially, when you hear something lease to own, the very first thing that goes through your brain is, oh, that's bad and scary, right? Because you know lease to own isn't as good as just outright, outright...
Councilperson, if you can just bring the mic up to you.
Okay, sorry, can you hear me now?
That's okay.
Okay, I'm trying. So initially, when I heard lease to own, I was very concerned. Just kind of common logic says that this isn't a good idea. However, as we've gotten into the process, every single question that's been asked has been answered satisfactorily. And I think for me to say, because it's, you know, it sounds bad rent to own, to say that I'm going to assert and assume that I have an arrogance of that I understand better than the local finance board, than the professionals who do it for a living, who've said that this makes financial sense and saves us $6.5 million would be, that would be what was not in the best interest of the taxpayer. So I vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Me?
Councilperson Coleman, yes.
You know, I don't remember all of this fuss going on when they built the slum area of downtown and made it the financial district of America. I don't remember...
Folks, can we respectfully speaking out and respect the council as they're talking?
I don't remember anyone talking about what was better for the taxpayers when that was happening. And now today that we sit here, we have developed downtown Jersey City into a financial district of Jersey City and it's beautiful. I'm fighting that hard to build Ward F and I'm gonna keep on fighting. This project has been putting, put through the scrutiny of the council, of the local finance board, everyone has been put on lockdown trying to answer all of the questions that came up with this one building opposed to a whole community downtown. So let me say to you that we have covered our butts. We have gone to the local finance board, we have sat with the developer, we have talked about what this is gonna bring to Ward F and this project is great for Ward F and I'm gonna keep on fighting for projects like this in Ward F and with that, I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
So, I am a product of downtown Jersey City when downtown Jersey City was burning and when downtown Jersey City was the land that God forgot. And I'm gonna tell you, there are people sitting here that lived in downtown Jersey City, but they didn't have the struggles that I had living in downtown Jersey City. So downtown Jersey City is beautiful right now, but I miss down, old downtown Jersey City. And I'm gonna tell you one thing, for the people that were complaining about the chemicals and the testing, I can bet you not every company in that waterfront was governmentally tested and chemically applied. I'm gonna tell you that for a fact. So to worry about an area that is truly hungry for change and the residents of the area welcome the change, it is totally unacceptable to listen to people here that are so much against it. If I can say hell yeah on this, on this, on this ordinance, I'm gonna say this 100% hell yeah, I want this to go through.
I take that, that's a nice official vote. There you go. Councilperson Waterman.
I've listened to everything, my voice is kind of hoarse, was I have a sore throat. I've listened to everything everyone has said and based on the information that we received and we had this information over a couple of months now. And I'm always a keen ear to hear what the public have to say. And everyone that got up and asked a question, I listened to the BA's answer their questions. Now you may not like the answers, but they did answer the questions. So Ward F needs something to draw people to that. I know people say we need stores, we need this, but you need something to draw the store. And so I believe with a city building, because there will be employees there and believe it or not, one day those employees will go outside and buy something. I believe that. I do believe that. And so with that in mind, I vote yes proudly that Ward F has this.
Councilperson Lavoro.
So I am thrilled, thrilled to be able to speak and cast my vote on this. I want to thank the folks and the professionals, Greg Carrato, thank you, Greg. I want to thank the mayor, who really brought a vision here to say that we needed to bring this kind of investment and opportunity to the MLK Hub and to the MLK Drive. And when the naysayers were lining up and saying that had all of the questions, look, I will tell you to all of those folks, you know, I get it, this is not something that's been done in the past, it's unusual and this whole lease to own arrangement, approach to funding the building is different. But if you think of it like a mortgage, like a mortgage on your home, you know, the bank lends you the money, it's like at the end of the mortgage, you own your home outright. And at the end of our 25 years, the city will own our, own our home, our City Hall annex. And it may not be familiar to folks and whatnot, but you know, I think there's been a lot of misinformation as well that may have fueled folks here and a lot of innuendo. And the facts have been consistently clear that this is fiscally beneficial to the city of Jersey City, a better outright option, yes, it has been completely and it will be to the people of Jersey City and I'll put my name and reputation on the line with regard to that. And I trust the folks like Greg Carrato and our financial folks, the folks at the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency, our BA, our legal counsel and others, and I'm happy to side with them on that one because I think this investment is worth it to Jersey City. A lot of people have spoken about the jobs and the opportunities there. I just want to clarify one thing about that, so there may have been some misunderstanding, I'm not sure exactly, but you know, the city employees are moving over there and so those jobs are gonna be for the city employees and certainly the city will be in the process of hiring new people and so forth, but it's gonna be the normal hiring processes there. As far as the project itself, there'll be a project labor agreement and we'll make sure that, working hard with the administration to ensure that local residents and minorities and subcontractors get those, the percentages and shares of those and access to those opportunities as well. I think this project is a catalyst for the area, for the MLK Drive and for Ward F, but I will say that it's not just for Ward F. Ward F is Jersey City. This is our city, this is our home, this is our area. And so, you know, what are we prepared to do for a neighborhood and community, our neighborhood and community, if we call it our own, what are we really prepared to do to help a community and to lift up a community that's been distressed for decades? And so the choices that have been presented to us for the naysayers is say, do nothing and debate this and continue to debate and argue, or do we take action? And the council take action with their votes. And so with my action, I want to say resoundingly and so positively, and actually I forgot to thank one other person, Councilwoman Coleman and Councilperson Waterman, and Councilman Coleman showed great leadership on this. I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, this is great. I vote a hell yeah.
City Ordinance 15-020 is approved 7-2 with council members Bajano and Councilperson Young voting no. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item 4D, City Ordinance 15-021. An ordinance amending chapter 175 of the municipal code, food handling establishments, article 3, food establishments, section 18, definitions, to expand the definition of agricultural market, to permit such markets to slice fruit and produce for immediate sale and consumption. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera.
No, no, Phil, come on up.
I apologize, Phil, I didn't see you making your approach. Folks, I should, I'm sorry. Folks, as you leave the chambers, please, please leave quietly. Thank you. And if you don't mind closing the doors behind you, that I greatly appreciate that. This is about the sliced fruit. This is ordinance about the sliced fruit.
Yeah, I just need a little clarity on it because I didn't have enough information and I do, yeah, I do vending and that is something that I'm teaching young people to do, so I just want to make sure that it is clear. When you say sliced fruits, you're saying as opposed to whole fruits and I'm not clear as to whether the ordinance is saying or not saying until I don't want it just to pass over my head and then I...
Right now, they're only allowed to sell whole fruit, whole fruits. This is gonna allow vendors to sell sliced fruit.
Oh, okay. With that, then I support that. Just want to make sure I'm clear.
All right, yep, thank you, thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance? This is still a public hearing on this ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
Wait, wait, wait. Jason Burke.
Jason Burke. Uh, on the issue, so all the bugs literally have been taken out of this fruit salad? What? Let me repeat. All the bugs have been taken out of this ordinance fruit salad. Let me repeat, what? You don't, you don't get illusions, I mean, it must be really, you don't, you don't, boy, you're a really slow one.
It's just that you don't make sense when you come up here.
I, I make a lot of sense. Every time I, I come up here, you're so dumbfounded.
Are we speaking on the ordinance?
Yeah, please.
Yes, I was speaking on the ordinance, and you were interjecting me, you're, excuse me.
Talking flies, not an ordinance, get to the ordinance.
Uh, yeah, I, excuse me, you can't use a little illusion? I'm sorry, you have to be plain, brain dead.
Jason, speak to the ordinance already.
By ordinance, is everything has been worked out to get the flies out of the soup? Cause like, I've been coming in here, there were lots of, this, this, this bill, this ordinance has come back, come back twice, and this is now fixed?
This is not the farmer's market. This is sliced fruit. This allows for people to be able to slice fruit?
Anywhere.
Yes.
Anywhere they want in Jersey City, that's good. Now they can really have a fruit salad anywhere, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Waterman on the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Yun. Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman. Councilperson, Council President Navarro. Aye. Motion carries 9-0 to close the public hearing for final consideration and adoption of city ordinance 15 dash 021, Councilperson Kuduski.
I like the question.
Councilperson Ramchow. Is that it? He said aye.
So I, I, I have some issue, I, actually I had some issue with this ordinance, and after I had my conversation with the council president, uh, he showed me that it's great, so, uh, I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Yun.
And this ordinance has an issue about, uh, uh, public health. The way that the ordinance is gonna present that public has in danger. First things, in order to do that, they have to have hot waters and cold waters, and that they have a refrigerator, and they have to order to clean their cutting board, hand wash and knife, but it's not ready yet. So I put, I, in order to protect your public health in Jersey City, I vote no.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
I'm gonna say the thing, same thing, I have some reservation about this because of personal experience. However, I've been guaranteed by the powers to be that they inspect, and that's how this ordinance came to be in the first place, was to allow them to do something legally instead of doing it illegally, and they will be monitored. And because several other colleagues voted no, it makes me know that I should say aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Definitely, I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Amen.
There was no ordinance before this ordinance, right? And this ordinance gives them a guideline to follow.
Correct.
But with that, yes.
If you're gonna speak, you gotta speak on the mic.
It gives them a guideline to follow, which they didn't have one before. So this ordinance really protects us more so as a public. So with that in mind, I vote aye.
Council President Navarro. I vote aye. City ordinance 15 dash 021 is approved 7-2 with council members Bajiano and Yun voting no. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item 4E, city ordinance 15 dash 22, an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Montgomery Street redevelopment plan to allow self-storage uses. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Waterman to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilperson Osborne on the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Yun. He stepped away. Close the public hearing. He stepped away. He stepped out, oh, yes. Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Stepped out too?
Yes. Okay. Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President. Aye. Okay, motion carries 7-0 with Councilpersons Yun and Rivera absent. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance 15 dash 22, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun, still out? Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera, still out? Councilperson Waterman. And Council President Navarro. Aye. City ordinance 15 dash 022 is approved 7-0 with Councilpersons Yun and Rivera absent. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item 4F, city ordinance 15 dash 023, it's an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City adopting amendments to the land development ordinance for self-storage and parking uses. Public hearing on this ordinance, Jason Burke.
Jason Burke, this is a question, with this aspect of the adoptions of self-storage and, uh, where on, uh, self-storage and parking uses, is there a definition of, for parking uses? I mean, I mean, could that be defined, uh, right here? What, what do you mean by parking use, uh?
What was the question?
The question is, I'm just looking at, basically, these are different for each one, I'm, the question is, what is meant by and parking uses?
And parking uses, which page are you on?
Uh, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm, uh, 23.
It's in the title.
It's just, I'm just asking, it's just, I'm just asking, what does that mean? I'm not against the ordinance, I'm just saying that this, it's peculiar, parking uses. I mean, only way I know to park a car is generally on the street.
This is adding surface parking as a permitted use within the port industrial districts within the city. Surface parking, not decks, or in, just adding surface parking as a permitted use.
So how is, all right, it's, so, so you're just creating parking lots in the city and...
This is allowing it to be a permitted use within this specific district. It's not creating anything today, just saying, moving forward, if someone wants to put a parking lot in this area, it's now permitted.
All right, so, and that's gonna be for, uh, all right, for that one. So what area is it, is that for the entire city, the land, uh, development ordinance? Or is it specific?
It, it, I, I remember this from the caucus, what, basically, there was like a catch-all before that would allow, it included parking lots and everything else, um, and so what happened is that people could put surface parking and self-storage in areas where we didn't want it, so they decided to create its own special definition, so that we can make sure that we really have, we really have surface parking lots where we want them, and self-storage where we want them, and not in other areas where we don't want them. So just, it's a new definition that was previously lumped into old definitions, was how it was explained to us.
And this also only affects industrial and highway commercial zones. So it's allowing self-storage facilities in those zones.
So basically, it's this, uh, modification of zoning ordinances, correct? All right, thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilperson Waterman to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilperson Coleman on the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun is still absent. Councilperson Coleman, I mean Osborne, sorry. Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
I'm trying to move fast. Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman and Council President Navarro.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0 with Councilperson Yun absent for final consideration and adoption for city ordinance 15 dash 023, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun is absent, Councilperson Osborne.
Osborne, I got it.
Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman. Council President Navarro.
Aye.
City ordinance 15 dash 023 is adopted 8-0 with Councilperson Yun absent. Next second reading ordinance, item 4G, city ordinance 15 dash 024, an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City adopting amendments to the Liberty Harbor redevelopment plan to allow self-storage uses. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Waterman to close the public hearing. On the motion, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun is still absent, Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman and Council President Navarro.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0 with Councilperson Yun absent for final consideration and adoption of city ordinance 15 dash 024, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun is still absent, Councilperson Coleman, I mean, Osborne.
Aye.
Sorry about that, Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Coleman?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President Navarro.
Aye.
City ordinance 15 dash 024 is adopted 8-0 with Councilperson Yun absent. It just takes one councilperson absent to, to mess me up with the, uh, flow. Uh, city, uh, item 4H, city ordinance 15 dash 025, it's an ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City adopting amendments to the definitions of the land development ordinance. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Councilperson Waterman, seconded by Councilperson Coleman on the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Yun is absent, Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman and Council President Navarro.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0 to close the public hearing with Councilperson, uh, Yun absent for final consideration and, and adoption of city ordinance 15 dash 25, Councilperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow. Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun is still absent, Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman and Council President Navarro.
Aye.
City ordinance 15 dash 025 is adopted 8-0 with Councilperson Yun absent. Item 4I, city ordinance 15 dash 026, an ordinance amending, number one, chapter 175, food handling establishments, article 3, food establishments to create standards for farmer's markets, number two, chapter 3, administration of government, article 9, Department of Public Works, section 71, Division of Park Maintenance, to amend the approval process for farmer's markets seeking permission to operate in city parks, number three, chapter 239, parks, section 15, hours of operation permits, farmer's market, farmer's markets, to create standards for farmer's markets operating in city parks, and chapter 160, fees and charges, section P, chapter 175, food handling establishments, to create a fee for farmer's markets. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard?
I would just like point of information. Um, I would just like-
Virginia Miller, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. My councilperson, um, I'm sorry, I just realized your father had passed, you had my condolences, I didn't give it to you from the beginning.
Thank you.
I would like my councilperson, along with Councilor Large Rivera, Councilwoman, uh, Waterman, and Councilor Large Navarro, um, speaking on this ordinance, maybe something can be worked out, I know it says farmer's market, and lots of times, there are three or four of us, we either come downtown to bypass station during the week, or go to Journal Square. And speaking of the hub, with, with all that space there, I was hoping that maybe you can work on something with this ordinance, that we can do a farmer's market at the hub with the vacant, uh, parking lots that we have going towards Virginia Avenue, um-
Speak up.
That would be a good idea since we have no restaurants there to eat.
Virginia, so, Virginia?
Yes.
I think Councilperson Coleman would like to address.
I'm gonna, I'm going to give you some information.
Yes.
I tried hard to get a farmer's market there, they don't wanna come right now, they say that they, their earnings will not substantiate them being there. Hopefully, after the city hall annex is there, maybe that might help, but right now, they won't come to the hub.
And I'll, I'll just add that the, um, the ordinance itself empowers the SID-
Yes.
-to be able to determine if there are farmer's market and if so, if they wanna do it themselves, or if a nonprofit wants to come in to establish it, then they can work together with the SID and the city of Jersey City to do that. Michelle is no longer here, I don't think, so, um, certainly can talk to her and see if she wants to work on that some more.
Okay, now, if some, some people want to, if they would want to come there, who would they get in touch with?
I, I, I think, can I say something? I think I will let, uh, Director Stacy Flanagan, uh, elaborate on that.
So actually, we've been working very closely with the JCRA related to this, particularly in the hub, uh, we have several nonprofits that are interested, uh, a large part of my team, um, including Gillian, Sergeant Allen, Angela McKnight, uh, who else is on it? Oh yeah, Andy's, uh, Market.
Market at Ocean and Clatterack.
They're already in talks for this season, and so, um, just stay-
Stay on them.
Ready.
Stay on them. Okay, thank you so much, because there are some people that are interested, and that's why I wanted to know who would they get in touch with, in order to come there, because all we have is a truck that comes to Ocean and Bramhall, maybe once a week or once every other week, and the people go to the truck. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Virginia. Next speaker?
So, just to, to the director, um, if moving forward in that, in the hub area, if this should pass, you need to loop in Michelle Massey and of course your councilwoman for word out.
But this conversation literally happened on Friday, uh, so we've just started this conversation, so we didn't wanna bother, um, Councilwoman Coleman, and yes, we send our condolences as well, so we, you know, we're waiting to see what the future was, uh, this evening.
Ms. Smart?
Don Smart, representing the Journal Square Restoration Corporation, which manages the Journal Square Special Improvement District, and on behalf of my board, I have been asked to express our appreciation to Council President Navarro for bringing us, uh, all of the SIDS and all of the members of the park community into conversations that have proven to be extremely productive on all parts. We also want to express our appreciation to the staff under, uh, Director Flanagan, who has worked assiduously with us to craft an ordinance that treats many, many issues. We urge you to support it, and, uh, for those who are very conscious that we enjoy a farmer's market, uh, operated by the Friends of the Loes, my board has instructed me to let you know that we will be in discussions with them following your passage of the ordinance to see where we might find common cause to continue a farmer's market in the face of substantial redevelopment that, uh, may very well change the face of Jersey City, but certainly will change the face of farmer's markets in our operation in the short term. We urge you to support it, we thank you again for those who have contributed to the consensus, the staff, Mar, uh, Margaret and John Howland, and, uh, we urge you to support it, and my other colleagues who are not here, Michelle and Christina, also have asked David and I and Rachel to assure you that the SIDS in this community are united in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker? Philip Carrington?
Greetings, my name is Philip Carrington, I'm, I have some very deep reservation of this, I had more than one time to look at it, and I'm opposing this primarily because you are making a law exclusive for farmer's market. In our community, the farmer's market has been attempted on Ocean Avenue, and it didn't work. has been attempted on Ocean Avenue, and it didn't work, and the farmers' market is, they're not going to come back into our community unless they're going to make money. It has to be done that way.
That's exactly right.
And so, you are basically saying only the farmers' market can sell fruits in a city park. That's not fair, because they're not going to be bound or, uh, controlled by one seventy-five, which is the food handler's license. So you're making a special law for them. For example, if my organization want to sell fruits in the park, we can't sell fruits in the park, even though we have a food handler's license. We would have to be a farmers' market. That's what this, that's what this is saying.
That's not accurate.
What is in that, okay, I need, I need the accuracy of that.
I'll allow Stacy, Director Flanagan to, to address that.
So, um, a farmers' market, uh, we're, we're looking at a multi-vendor location that includes agricultural products, bakery goods, uh, butchers, uh, things that are, uh, local and sustained within a certain mile, uh, area. And so what we're saying is, uh, we are actually pulling out from the currently, all farmers' markets operate under event permit, that sometimes are not, um, you know, nobody's aware that they're happening, right? So we are trying to make sure more people are aware that these are specifically farmers' markets, and not just any other event that happens to sell food. This is particular kinds of foods that will drive people with their food stamps, with their WIC checks, with their farmers' market nutrition programs, and there's already, we already know the number of dollar subsidies in your community that exist, and people need farmers' markets to spend those, um, FMMP checks in particular, which is over a hundred thousand dollars in our city. Um, so we know the money's there, um, we know how to leverage that money, and, um, it's, it's not making something separate and distinct to, uh, keep things away, it's to showcase the importance of eating cleaner, eating healthier, and having greater opportunities to find fruits and vegetables in neighborhoods that are barren of that.
And you can still get the permit or license to sell other goods and other things like that? It just wouldn't be the farmers' market license?
With all due respect, the questions are answered. Either it was not understood by you and her, or, but it was not answered. I'm, I'm going to make myself, let me be specific.
So, like we, like we passed earlier, you can get an agriculture license to sell fruits, just fruits and vegetables from your truck, like is currently coming by, or as a peddler, and now, actually, the council just passed that you can sell cut fruit. And so, in your agriculture license, that you can come to the health department to pick up, you can be a fruit peddler and sell fruits and/or vegetables. You can also host an event that might have food and other things at. That is actually not in the health department. That is actually, sits in the RRC and has only dealings with the health department is licensing a vendor or making sure a vendor is licensed. And then there's the farmers' market permit, which will hopefully sit in the health department, that will ease the opportunities for people to, um, have less paperwork to just sell, um, more natural foods.
Let me bring up to this Louis Comedy nomination, because he just doesn't seem to understand the question. Simple as this. You're, you're saying that only the farmers' market can sell, this is it, in a city park. That's the question here.
That's not what it's saying.
But this says.
That's the question.
That's not what it's saying.
That's what, that's my question that I'm asking.
That's not what you asked us originally. So, in the park, you need a park permit to sell.
In the park itself.
Correct. You need a park permit, and then if you're a licensed food handler, you would need to prove that to the, the health department. If not, and you already receive a permit from the park just to sell fruits?
Fruits, yes.
You would need a park permit first.
Can you get that? That's the question.
That's up to the Parks Division. I'm not the Parks Division.
Anyone else? Listen, listen, guys, guys, we, we can't overspeak everybody. We have to take it one person at a time, because the court reporter's having a difficult time seeing who's speaking. So through the Counsel President, who wants to speak? Okay?
Yeah, okay, you're pretty close to it. It's just a simple question.
Okay.
Please, please let me ask a question, please.
We've gone through.
With all due respect, with all due respect, just one simple question. Can you sell as a private organization fruits in the park, other than being a farmers' market? Just a simple question. Can you get a permit just to sell fruits in the city park?
Yes, you can get, you can do it today, and you can do it tomorrow.
You don't need to circle them close, it's a simple question. Did you understand what I'm saying now? Because you seem to not understand most of the time that I speak.
Just get the right permit.
That's it. That's why I'm asking the question, before, in order for me to get the right permit, I have to ask the right question. You have to understand the right question before you can ask the means.
Why don't you just, you go through this every meeting. Why don't you, Peter Basso, my aide is there, why don't we actually sit down, and let's talk to the folks at health, and figure out what's the right permit for the circumstances that you're, you're, you're looking to do. So if you're looking to be at this park or that park, we'll talk to them. The Parks people will walk right through the process, and make sure we get it all taken care of. How's that?
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Thanks, Phil, Peter.
No exclusive.
Thank you.
My name is Gillian Sergeant Allen.
Gillian?
With a G.
And your last name?
Sergeant Allen, S-A-R-J-E-A-N-T hyphen A-L-L-E-N.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, I am elated, and I'm grateful to the council for keeping its promise and bringing this back for a vote, and I'm so pleased that it's moving in a positive direction. I, um, last go around, I was up here and explained that I was, I'm a resident of Ward F. I live on Randolph Avenue. We're famous for a couple things, but not for access to farmers' market, and I am just thrilled that we can now have a process that is not convoluted, that gets us exactly directly to our locally sourced produce, and bringing it into our community so we can make sure that our, our residents have access to nutritious foods. I will say that I started this conversation along with, um, other members of the health department back in May of two thousand and fourteen. It's been a pleasure working with folks to sort out what we need to in order to make it, uh, an equitable, um, ordinance, because we want this to continue, and, and we're hoping to bring other bits to it by having, you know, act EBT accessibility, so that all of our residents can use their monies to purchase this food. So I must say, thank you. You haven't voted yet, but please vote yes on this, but I thank you in advance of your vote for your support on this.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Rachel Sieg.
Rachel?
Sieg, S-I-E-G.
S-I-E-G?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I'm the executive director of the Historic Downtown Special Improvement District, and we approve of the ordinance written. Um, and I just want to thank council members for taking the time. Uh, Councilwoman Candace Osborne has taken my phone calls late at night, really has taken the time and the effort, and I really appreciate it. It's been a long journey. Director Stacy Flanagan, Brian Platt, Margaret, thank you all, and I say yes.
You. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Mira Prinzery, and I am.
I didn't get your first name.
Mira, M-I-R-A.
M-I-R-A?
Mm-hmm.
And last name?
Prinzery.
Can you spell it?
P-R-I-N-Z.
P-R-I-N-Z.
Capital A-R-E-Y. And I'm here representing the farmers' market in Lincoln Park, as well as the Jersey City Parks Coalition. Both are in support of this ordinance. Five of our eight farmers' markets are run by our park groups, and these monies go right back into the communities in the parks that they, um, shepherd and steward. It's been a very long process since May of last year, as Gillian had just said. So we're thrilled that we were able to get all of the stakeholders together to come to agreement on this particular ordinance. It gives the farmers' markets the flexibility to have not only fresh whole produce and, um, fruits in their markets, but also act as small business incubators with that forty-five percent, to test out neighborhoods like mine on the west side. And addition to that, with the twenty-five percent of the farmers had required to take the SNAP, WIC, and senior vouchers, it gives greater access to neighborhoods, again, like mine, with mixed income and diversity that way. So please, we're asking you to vote yes, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jason Burr.
Hi, Logistics. Uh, how many permits will be permitted to be submitted out to the public?
What's the question?
Question is, how many permits will be permitted to be issued to the public for this?
There's no limits right now.
There's no limit.
Yeah.
Unlike the vendors, they're, uh, like for carve, for the food vendors on the, on the corners, there is a mound. So basically, there's no limit, you're saying, as opposed to, say, the food vendors with the vans?
With the food trucks, right. There's no, no cap?
No cap. That's good to know. The hours of operation will be like from eight to what? Is there a particular time for operation?
Director Flanagan, Margaret?
Sure. Um, so if the farmers' market is held in a park, then it would be subject to the park hours, which are established under the Parks Code. I believe ten PM is the latest an event can be held in a Jersey City park, um, if it was held somewhere else. Uh, this ordinance doesn't stipulate how late, but it would be up to the event managers. I don't see a lot of foot traffic for a farmers' market, uh, beyond ten PM, so.
That's good. And the cost for each permit? The cost?
The cost for the permits is, has, uh, for the market managers has been waived in the nature of promoting healthy food access citywide. So if you're a member of a nonprofit, and your nonprofit would like to establish a market, uh, we will happily approve your license, assuming it meets all of the requirements, free of charge, and, and give you a permit.
With the way the IRS has been, being played, and the nonprofits have been, some nonprofits have been denied their status for IRS nonprofit, if someone is waiting on their paper, would you still honor them as a non, a prospective nonprofit?
Well, the ordinance actually defines what a not-for-profit is, and they only have to be registered with the state of New Jersey. They're not required to show IRS certification of nonprofit status.
That's very, that's very smart, trying to get, the IRS is actually a non-entity anyway, but with all tax on their, that anyway. Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate it.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard?
They motion for a second.
No, no, we have a public speaker.
Hello, it's Colin Egan, uh, thirty-five Sherman Place.
Last name, I mean, first name?
It's Colin, C-O-L-I-N. Um, back in the, uh, early nineties, and God, I'm getting old, I, uh, was still involved in the Lows, and was spending a lot of time in Journal Square, and thought, in the wake of the growing success of the green markets in New York, it would really be nice to have a farmers' market in Journal Square, but at that time, there were no major farmers' markets anywhere in Jersey City. Couple of years later, I found myself in Deli Plus in the path center in the square.
Colin, be a little closer to the mic.
Better? Yep. Okay. Um, and I was called over to a table by someone who I knew, who worked for the, uh, the Division of Culture at the time, and he, uh, was sitting with some people he introduced as from Rutgers, from the New Jersey Department of Agriculture, and the Port Authority, and it seemed they all wanted to see a farmers' market created in Journal Square, but the, uh, friend I knew from the Division of Culture said his boss had absolutely refused. He'd scoffed at the idea, said they were the Division of Culture, not agriculture, and it would never work, and they were hoping I would take it on. And I did, because I thought that it was a good thing for Journal Square. It would be both an amenity and a service for the people. In the time, we started it through the Economic Development Corporation, and with a lot of help from Friends of the Lows, and despite the, uh, the naysayers, it was an instant success. Uh, in those days, we had six farmers. We had people from throughout the city coming, and it really took off. Now, in the years since, Journal Square has had some tough times, and it's been difficult to keep the market going, but Friends of the Lows has done just that. I still get stopped by people in, uh, the square around about this time every year, wondering when the market will open again. We still get seniors with their checks, we get, uh, women with the, and families with WIC checks, we get commuters. It's a pleasure to run the market. Um, it is one of the things I'm very proud of. I'm also proud of the fact that the Journal Square market, I think, helped inspire some others in this city, and that's a very good thing. Um, as the markets have grown throughout the city, there was need to bring some regulation, and I applaud the city for doing that. It's been a difficult road, I know. Um, a lot of good people have worked on it very hard. As you know, I'm rather busy with the Lows. Uh, we're trying to find a solution to that situation that will address all the concerns and be the best for everything. Uh, but there were good folks from the Riverview Neighborhood Association, Riverview Farmers Market rather, and from the Parks Coalition working on the farmers' market issue. So I, frankly, especially in the last half year, wasn't paying too much attention, which is why I was surprised when someone had me read a, uh, the recent version of the ordinance, the one you're about to pass, that included a section that was new, that required that any farmers' market in a special improvement district in the city be run by the Special Improvement District Authority, uh, in my case, Don's group, and there was no grandfathering for an entity that had existed before this, this ordinance, meaning, basically, the ordinance was putting me and Friends of the Lows out of the farmers' market business. And I was frankly a bit upset at that, and I talked to Don to ask if I was reading that correctly, and he said I was. It was a byproduct, not the intention of the ordinance. Uh, the intention was to try and make sure there was no conflict between vendors in the market and local area merchants, which is something I certainly understand, and in the twenty-odd years of being involved in the farmers' market at the square, we've tried to avoid. Um, so I was surprised that nevertheless, this ordinance was going to affect us in the way it did, and I was hoping there might be consideration for a grandfather clause, but I understand the desire to finally put this to bed now, um, so there'll be no changes. I want to thank the council president for, um, talking with me about this issue, and for Councilman Bogiano, my ward councilman in the square, and I will, um, pick you guys up on your offer to work with me and with the Journal Square Restoration Corp. to make sure that Friends of the Lows and I remain involved in the market. It's a personal thing for me, because I love this city, and I really like Journal Square, and I was very, I've always been very proud of bringing the first major market to the city and sustaining it, and it's a policy thing, because I know this ordinance is intended to encourage more farmers' markets, and I frankly have to say, I'm not sure that the best way to do that is to, perhaps unintentionally, um, basically tell the organization with the oldest farmers' market in the city, get out. So hopefully we'll walk, work through that, and I thank the council as always. Counsel President, Councilman Bogiano, thank you for your assistance, and I thank you for your indulgence now. Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Colin.
It's Mark Bunberry, thirty-five oh four, Kennedy Boulevard.
It's Mark, and your last name?
Mark Bunberry, B-U-N-B-U-R-Y.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, good evening, good late evening, uh, council president and council members, uh, and also to the city administration that's here. Uh, my name again is Mark Bunberry. I'm here on behalf of and as the president of Farms in the Heights, which is the nonprofit which operates the Riverview Farmers Market every Sunday from May through November in Riverview Park in the Jersey City Heights neighborhood. Uh, just a couple of points I want to make about the ordinance. Uh, first, want to express gratitude to the city for deciding to undertake this unknowingly gargantuan task of trying to put together a standard process by which all the farmers' markets in the city can operate. Uh, principally with all volunteer boards and all volunteer staff, farmers' markets provide many benefits, both aesthetic and economic, to almost every corner of Jersey City. The Riverview Farmers Market, for example, now in its fifth year of operation, has helped to incubate small businesses which later became storefront establishments in our neighborhood in the Heights, promoted and nurtured minority and women-owned businesses in our community, provided access where there was none to locally grown goods to SNAP, WIC, senior farmers' market nutrition program recipients, created a community music and art space in which all community members can gather and come together as one. More than just a proponent for change, the Riverview Farmers Market has been an engine for economic and community development, and that's why we believe that it's important to have a final ordinance that not only aims to stifle or regulate farmers' markets, but that facilitates and encourages markets like the Riverview Farmers Market that serve community residents. We thank the council president and. We thank the council president and his staff for tabling prior versions of the ordinance and revisiting the problematic fee structure which was there. And we thank the city administration for working with the farmer's markets on this ordinance overall. We respectfully ask that, in light of how new this ordinance is, that the council revisit the ordinance in a year's time to see what works and what didn't work, and it consults with the markets to find out what it can do to make this ordinance the best farmer's market ordinance that it can be. Thank you.
Mark?
Yes?
Can we get a copy of that, what you're reading from? I don't even know why it was for my call report, I don't think she heard everything. Can you make a copy?
Yeah, I can, I can, yes.
Thank you. Not the secretarial copy?
Okay.
So much. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance? Any member of the public wishing to be heard? Motion made by councilperson? One final speaker.
David Diaz, Central Avenue Special Improvement District in Jersey City Heights. Good evening, council. On behalf of its 450 members, the Central Avenue SID Program and its trustees, we would like to support the new farmer's market ordinance and encourage the city council to adopt it as presented. Our city organization wishes to thank the members of the city council who voted to table this matter back last October, allowing the city's business community an opportunity to enhance the legislation. Through the leadership of Council President Lavaro, all five of the city's SID programs and the Jersey City Parks Coalition were able to come together, form a consensus on responsible legislation that may help farmer's markets grow citywide. It has been six months of numerous meetings, emails, to resolve the concerns stated last October. This process has taught us that the voice of the Jersey, every Jersey City stakeholder is important to this council. This instills confidence that government sees this business community as a partner, and we can work together to revise legislation that impacts commerce and jobs when necessary. Thank you again to Council President Lavaro, Stacy Flanagan and her staff, and for all their efforts and guidance as we work through this process. And thank you again to the entire city council for supporting the ordinance and Jersey City's business community. Good evening, God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I'll be brief. My name is Beverly Brown Rugia, R-U-G-G-I-A. I live at 42 Bowers Street, Jersey City, 07307. Good evening, thank you, Council President Lavaro and the rest of the council members, Stacy Flanagan and staff. I am also a member of the Riverview Farmer's Market Board, the nonprofit Farms in the Heights. I just want to say that after a lengthy process, this ordinance does incorporate the voices of dozens of stakeholders. And yet, given the wide diversity of market interests, some of the market managers understandably still have doubts and concerns about how this ordinance will individually affect them. For this reason, we ask the Health and Human Services and administration to implement this ordinance with a policy of leniency in the first season wherever possible to help make, to help markets comply and adjust to the law. No one's suggesting that there be indefinite exceptions and waivers that would defeat the purpose of having an ordinance, but simply pragmatic implementation, keeping in mind that most of us are just volunteers trying to make our city better. We're confident that we can work together to make this ordinance a really good one. Rather than table the ordinance, I echo my colleague Mark's sentiments when he says, "We urge you to pass this ordinance." I also would like to repeat that we hope, we urge all the markets to report at the end of the 2015 season on how the ordinance has worked or not worked. And we urge the council, we ask you actually, to commit to reviewing the feedback that's provided by the markets and to revisit the ordinance at that time to make revisions based on what worked, what has worked and what hasn't worked. There may be issues we haven't even thought of yet, so it's good to go back to it. But most of all, we would also like to urge that you do everything possible to protect the existing markets and work with us to create a strong ordinance that reflects the diverse needs across the city while ensuring high standards and sustainable practices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance? Any member of the public still wishing to be heard? Chief Go, motion second by Coleman? Okay. Motion made by Councilperson Ramchow, seconded by Councilperson Coleman on the motion to close the public hearing, Councilperson Kudjuski. Councilperson Ramchow. Councilperson Boggiano. Councilperson Young. Councilperson Osborne. Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Rivera. Councilperson Waterman. And Council President Lavaro. Aye. Motion carries nine zero for final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-026. Councilperson Kudjuski. Councilperson Ramchow.
So before I vote on this legislation, let me just say that this is the, since I've been elected in office and sit on the city council, this is the first, actually only legislation I've been seeing table, voted on. And because of this legislation, my colleague, my colleague Candace Osborne and myself, we cleaned the table, because there was too much stuff on the table, at the table, and voted on. So I think this legislation, you know, I want to thank director Stacy Flanagan, you know, she did a good job, work along with the farmer's market and tweak it and bring it back now, and it's what everybody wants. And with that, I support it.
Thank you. Councilperson Boggiano.
Yeah, I just have to say one thing. I want Don Smart, Colin Egan and Patty, make sure the three of you sit down and work out the differences that you have. Speaking with Rolando, Rolando has assured me, he's spoken to all three of you, so please, get everything straightened out for the benefit of Journal Square, all right? I vote aye.
Councilperson Young.
You know, this is, as I think, good city ordinance and all the stakeholders put to their efforts to protect their own interests and the mutual interest. I think it's very good. This is, I think, our first time, all different interest groups have worked together. I support aye, and especially, I went towards all the farmer's market, but I pledge that the Riverview Farmer's Market, they are really strict rules they put in the vendors. I'm pretty sure they do a great job. I'm really appreciated, continue to keep the good work.
Thank you. Councilperson Osborne.
I just would like to echo what some of my colleagues have said to say thank you for everyone for working it out. It's been very long getting this put together, but it shows that when you, when you get together and you talk it out, there can be a compromise and a ordinance and situation that works for everyone. So I vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Stacy, you and your staff have been remarkable with this SIDs. I love that, you know, we're all sitting on the same, you know, on the same table. This is great, definitely vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman. Council President Lavaro. Okay, so my colleagues, please bear with me, I have a few words to say. So this ordinance, just for the viewing public, for the first time defines a farmer's market in Jersey City as a type of establishment and provides a real roadmap for our city's market managers and vendors to conduct their business that they've been doing now for quite some time. Until now, many of the people have been doing this, volunteers have kind of just had to traverse a legal kind of abyss and try to figure out and piece it together as to how to do it, whether it was the Friends of the Lowe's in Journal Square or Hamilton Park or Farms in the Heights. And every, every market had to figure this out on their own in some way. So this will, and I give you all tremendous credit because you all put forward all of those efforts that got us to this stage and this point now where we have some sort of process. And I want to say, at the outset, in response to Mark and Beverly, that we will definitely revisit after the season and see what's working, what's not working, work with the Department of Health and Human Services and make sure that this works and that hopefully a model for other folks throughout the, throughout the state and the country. I know that Director Flanagan and her office, Margaret and others have worked extraordinarily hard on this and that this, that the intention of it all was to expand healthy food options in many ways, right? For the people of Jersey City and particularly for neighborhoods that have long not had those options available to them. And this, this ordinance will ultimately allow for that, allowing for food deserts and areas that have been traditionally underserved, hopefully providing some incentive towards that, towards bringing food farmer's markets there. I know last November, last October, when we tabled it, I had promised then that we'd bring it back in November, and that by the end of November, we'd get it passed. I apologize for breaking my promise on that, but we did get it done. And I want to thank everyone who came to the table to do that. It definitely strikes the right balance. I want to thank the folks at the SID, all of the SIDs and all of the farmer's market managers and the Parks Coalition for coming together and working together through this. And it wasn't a perfect process, and certainly there are things that I learned along the way and certainly learned a lot about farmer's markets along the way as well. You know, the last thing I just want to say is thank you to folks, Stacy Flanagan, Director Flanagan, Margaret Devico, thank you from your office and from the Law Department, John Helenon, thank you so much. And I want to thank my aide, Peter Bassel, who put in a lot of work, reaching out to folks and trying to bring everyone together. Thank you, Peter. I vote aye. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, can I say one last thing?
No.
Just, I will. To Don, Patty and Colin, definitely, as Richie said, we'll get together, yeah, work it out. We're all together in this, one city. Thanks, okay? City Ordinance 15-026 is approved nine zero. Before we move on, can I just catch up? Councilperson Young and Councilperson Rivera on the ordinances that were approved earlier? Just pay attention to me, council members. Councilperson Young, we're looking at Ordinance 15-22. I vote aye. And Councilperson Rivera?
I vote aye.
So just to recap, City Ordinance 15-022 is approved nine zero, with all council members voting aye. Councilperson Young, on City Ordinance 15-023?
I vote aye.
To recap, City Ordinance 15-023 is approved nine zero. Councilperson Young, City Ordinance 15-024?
I vote aye.
City Ordinance 15-024 is approved nine zero. And the last ordinance, Councilperson Young, 15-025?
I vote aye.
Thanks. City Ordinance 15-025 is approved nine zero. And now, all council members are caught up. Wait. Before we move on to the public speaking portion, it is the intention to remove items 11I and 11J from the tabled agenda. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion. Motion made by Councilperson Rivera, second by Councilperson Coleman. On the motion to remove items 11I and 11J from the tabled agenda, Councilperson Kudjuski. Councilperson Ramchow. What are we doing?
Removing them from the table.
Removing from the tabled agenda. Great. Are we okay?
Yes.
Councilperson Boggiano. Councilperson Young. Councilperson Osborne. Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Rivera. Councilperson Waterman. And Council President Lavaro. Aye. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Motion carries nine zero. City Ordinance, for final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-007, Councilperson Kudjuski. Councilperson Ramchow. Councilperson Boggiano. Councilperson Young. Councilperson Osborne. Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Rivera. Councilperson Waterman. And Council President Lavaro. City Ordinance 15-007 is approved nine zero. The other, second reading ordinance, I mean, removed from the tabled agenda, item 11J?
Is that right?
Second. City Ordinance 15-008, for final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-008, Councilperson Kudjuski. Councilperson Ramchow. Councilperson Boggiano. Councilperson Young. Councilperson Osborne. Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Rivera. Councilperson Waterman. And Council President Lavaro. City Ordinance 15-008 is approved nine zero. And on to our favorite portion of the meeting, our public speaking portion. First speaker is Dan Sicardi. Wait, Sean. Sean, can we, Councilperson Osborne has a question. Go ahead. Sure.
So, since we just voted the farmer's market, the revised farmer's market ordinance, should we untable 4G and vote it down?
11G.
I'm sorry, 11G and vote it down?
We can do that. If you want to do that, that's fine. Yep. It was a previous farmer's market ordinance, and clean up the... Give me one second on that, all right?
Yeah, and we could do 11A while we're at it, that's...
That's fine.
Go ahead and do them.
Motion to untable... Wait a minute. We're making a motion to remove...
A and G.
Items 11A and 11G? All right, 11A is what? 11A and 11G. But there's a public hearing, okay, so we have to have a public hearing?
No, we don't, it's after the public hearing.
It says prior, 11A is prior to the close. Yeah, you know what? Let's not, let's not make that motion. 11G is after the close of the public hearing. We can make the motion to remove 11G. Okay, all right. Motion to move 11G made by Councilperson Osborne. Do I have a second? Second by Councilperson Rivera on the motion to remove item 4, 11G. Councilperson Kudjuski. Councilperson Ramchow. Councilperson Boggiano. Councilperson Young. Councilperson Osborne. Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Rivera. Councilperson Waterman. Councilperson, Council President Lavaro. Motion to remove item 4G is approved nine zero. Going to write to vote on item 4G. City Ordinance 14-125, excuse me, 11J. 14-125. Councilperson Kudjuski. Councilperson Ramchow. Councilperson Boggiano. Councilperson Young. Councilperson Osborne. Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Rivera. Councilperson Waterman. And Council President Lavaro. City Ordinance 14-125 is defeated zero nine. With all council members voting no. Okay, on to our public speaking portion of the meeting. First speaker, Daniel Sicardi. Not here? Laverne Washington.
Thank you. Councilman Coleman, you know, you're in my heart.
Thank you.
I didn't know. And council people, you did a great job tonight, those that voted for the hub. You know, when people don't understand development in this city, they should research, they really should. When the lady said about the developer and the 900 people, I talked with the man from Brandywine. He says, "Laverne, we sub, they are a designated developer, but they sub people. They sub for a lot of development that has gone on in this city." I don't know about downtown, I can't speak, but I know some in the Heights, some in the Square, some in Ward A and B up here. Developers sub to small contractors. Those houses on Pacific Avenue 30 years ago went up. Geno Cardinal and another contractor, two family houses on Pacific. I remember Buddy Robinson, my nephew's head now, he do water and sewer lines. They did the work, small contractors, contractors ate. He did the water and sewer lines. Another developer might have did the housing, but they brought in work with different stages that local contractors and small contractors can have. My nephew does work all in Jersey City, Hoboken, West New York. The contact he knew, he says, "That was your nephew?" I said, "Yeah, he's bonded. He's got a million dollar bond for years. He learned from Buddy Robinson with his own business. He's all over Hoboken and all over up here doing water." So the guy, I introduced him to him. These people in here need work. These people in here need work. And sometimes we get the wrong concept when stuff come to our city and our community. A guy came to me, I was sitting, he says, Laverne, I was working downtown. He said, it was union. He said, I got laid off when I got my paycheck. I had to call Pat Keller because this guy said, you know, we getting ready to get overtime, but the guy from out of town is getting the jobs and getting the work. And then we have people here that use air dresses and live in Sabbath, Jersey, down by Atlantic City somewhere. We have to watch what goes on in this city. We have to really watch what goes on down here, across, I don't care where it is. And them jobs just don't go for people of color, they go for everybody that needs a job, I don't care what color their skin is. We gotta get away from that, there's something for the African American community, just because it's coming into that era, it's to beautify. The Ponderosa was one of the first restaurants when they built that cane. It died, not because of the people in the community, it died because enough was to build around it. You need to build up that area so you can bring back the businesses that were there and go on to bring new stuff there, just like, like you said. I lived up in Washington Apartments, up above you in Union City, right there at the line. I used to shop on Century Avenue. When I had my son 35 years ago, I lived up there for a minute before I got my house back on Pacific. And you can walk down there 35 years ago, we had an AMP, the AMP is gone, am I right? You know, so, we talk about stuff here, some of us need to be educated in what we talking about. And like you said, yeah, about, and what's gonna go on with that building when, after 25 years when the city owns? It's just like, when we do a project with tax credits, the building, you pay the money back to HUD and to the federal government, wherever you got the loans from, to build the building, you pay that money back over time, and that's when you own the building. That's where a lot of property that, a project that go up, when they get tax credits and affordable housing money, merger market money to build complected, the money has to be paid back. The rent, if people are not collecting that rent, that rent money goes back to the federal government, wherever that money comes from, that's where that money go. The money from that building when it's built, when the city is payment, is going back to the money that the developer laid out to build it. That's why after, the money takes 25 years to pay back, you own that building. The developer, he's only laying out the money for you. Now, if you can pay the building off beforehand, you pay it off. But that's how that goes, and I'm just trying to give you an educated thought on it, because I did the Webb Apartments, and I did the Fred Martin Apartments with development, I know how, where we got them, and those were 22 million dollar projects, both of them. Those were 40 units with commercial space, it was 22 million. The building on Oak and MLK, the building on MLK between Weyman and Digwell. Thank you.
Wow. Are you okay? Sorry about that.
I was surprised and glad to see that the action, the council took action to recognize the contributions of Mayor Anthony Cucci and his wife by adding his name to this chamber. The Cucci family has lived in Jersey City for 160 years. They've been here and they will be here through the generations. After the mayor left, his traditional mayor, he was also elected to the Jersey City Board of Education. And even a few months ago, because I would call him maybe a couple of weeks, a few months ago, he wanted to get up and he wanted to go to a Board of Education meeting. Obviously, physically, he wasn't able to do that. But his spirit was still there. I would request that the council president, on behalf of the city council, send a letter to the Board of Education asking them to name a school after Anthony R. Cucci. I would also like the council president to send a letter to Mr. Scott, the president and CEO of the Jersey City Medical Center. That hospital is there because of Mayor Cucci. When that hospital came for a vote, the medical center was still there. They had 600 beds, and when we had the debate about having the new hospital here, from 600 beds to 350 beds, there was 300 people in here from the unions against Mayor Cucci. There was five votes to put that hospital where it is today, and I know that my vote was the fifth vote. So Mayor Cucci should also be recognized. Maybe they could name a medical library inside the hospital, or the emergency, or something like that, but at least recognize, because what happened was, he fought for that hospital. And when it finally got built, and everybody was on the platform, congressmen and senators and everybody else, Mayor Cucci was nowhere around. They found out about him, and they just grabbed for themselves. So, there are a lot of things that Mayor Cucci and his family have done. This council chamber is named after his wife. He married late, he married when he was 60 years old. On December the 3rd, 1988, Mrs. Cucci was killed in a train crash at 10,000 feet in the Andes Mountains. I was in that train. I was right in the shotgun seat, and I was taking video, and after the train jumped the tracks and turned over, it flattened like an accordion. My body was pushed into the space where my feet were. And people like Mrs. Cucci and Mrs. Chacon, the wife of the mayor of Cusco, was also killed. Mrs. Cucci died immediately. Mrs. Chacon lasted about 15 minutes. It was 3 o'clock in the afternoon, the sun was going down, and there were 10,000 feet in the Andes Mountains. There was nothing to do except crawl from where the train landed to the road, which was about three, which was about 800 feet in distance. I passed out three times before I got to that road, but I was able to go get, um, um, rescue. One thing that Mayor Cucci did not do, when we were told that this was a terrorist act, Mayor Cucci refused to let these terrorists stop us from having a sister city agreement with the city of Cusco, which is the ancient, uh, city of the Inter Empire. And they were happy to have a, um, association with Jersey City, because we have the Statue of Liberty here, and they know where Jersey City is because of our closeness to the Statue of Liberty. I, um, um, thank the council for allowing me to speak this evening, and I would just like to say one thing in closing. I'm sorry that all our friends from the pants, from the farmers markets have all gone. But I would like to see 10% of the effort put into these farmers markets to put into a pantry for hungry people, because there are still hungry people in Jersey City, and there's hungry children in Jersey City. So, you know, apples at the farmers market are not cheaper than apples at ShopRite. People that shop at the farmers markets are people who are more well-heeled than those who go to a, to a supermarket. So I would like to, um, see that done, and see that something is done to address the issue of hungry people in Jersey City. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Tamika McLenals?
Not here.
Left. Emma Wolf?
Good to speak to the council for a second time tonight. First of all, I would like to thank the city council members for the work that we've done together so far on the compliance issue in Jersey City and working with local contractors. The number of hours that was put into the HUD projects and learning who our local contractors were and their personal situations and their business situation was more than gratifying. Bringing that to the council for me was a personal gratification as well. What I would like to say is that I feel that major accomplishments were accomplished tonight, and there's only more to follow. With that said, I believe I sent to each council member a copy of the presentation called Bridging the Gap, which speaks to helping contractors across the city, both construction contractors and other suppliers and vendors, with becoming certified as members of the community to make sure that as they participate in government dollars, they are prepared legally and legitimately to do so, and prepared and to be able to do that from a management point of view. As many of you may know, that I've been working to help them recognize what compliance is, their role in there, their certifications, their requirements to keep books, and their product requirements to be taxpayers as part of the citizenship of receiving help from the city and other government funding, as well as the state and federal government. I hope at some point to meet with you and discuss that individually, but also I make myself available to all the council members, and especially the disparity committee, to provide the knowledge that I've gained and the research I've gained over the last year and a half working on that particular project. So with that, I'll thank you once again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Hold on one second, Yvonne.
Okay, Yvonne Ballser, Councilwoman Coleman, my condolences to your family, but I do want to go back on the issue of City Hall annex. You mentioned, Councilwoman, that you reach out to different churches, talk about the meeting. Well, I attend St. Anne's Church on Tunneling Avenue, St. Paul's, and Mike's church did not get noticed at all. If you're going to do something that has my tax dollars involved in it, then there should have been a meeting in every ward. That's not a Ward F issue. It's a city issue, and there should have been a meeting in every ward. My issue is always having contaminated soil. And to get back to a comment you made, Mr. Rivera, when the waterfront was developed, it was not tax dollars involved in cleaning the soil, it was the developers. Now it is the city's tax dollars on the line, and we don't know what that will cost. The reason why I was concerned, if that was an issue in Ward C, I would have been to the meeting and asked about that, because that was my issue, is how much money will that cost us to clean up? Will it be $5 million, $10 million, $50 million? We don't know. It could be $50 million. We don't know the extent of the contamination. I don't understand the need to sign a document and say, we're gonna do this, and then we're gonna test later on. So any money you save, you're gonna spend in the cleanup. That was my concern. And my concern, and the people who are on the verge of losing their homes are in Ward F, not the people in my area or other areas, because they're the ones, when you read in the newspaper, they're the ones that are in tax lien Ward F. So the issue of being physically responsible is very important to me. So I recommend Michael Young, Councilwoman Young, for bringing up the issue, because we just can't do this wah-wah and thanks is okay. No one ever talks about the people losing their homes due to high taxes. We talk about jobs for people, we never talk about how government costs people a lot of money. So I want to comment to Michael Young for doing his due diligence. But as right now, I don't know what's gonna cost taxpayers to clean that up. We don't know. And one of the things I will be doing over the next year or so, I'm gonna be doing opers on the contamination of that site. I want to see what it will cost me as a taxpayer, what it will cost everyone else. So there should have been a meeting in every ward. I'm very upset by that, and I will soon will take them back immensely. If you're gonna contact churches, please contact St. Anne's or St. Paul's Avenue and Tunneling, because I attend church every Sunday, sometimes even Saturday. So contact all the churches, not just a few. Thank you very much.
Oh. Sorry, let's see. Who's on next?
Kabili.
Kabili Tiari?
Please wake up.
Let's be respectful, councilman. All right, no worries.
Where are we, Kabili?
Yes.
Okay, hold on. You're on the clock.
Okay. I'm not bringing this issue up because of what we said earlier by Mr. Wolf, but I've said continuously, since we have some type of merged relationship with the compliance unit here in City Hall and the J.C. Employment and Training Program Director. We have to really staff our compliance unit. Number one, they are understaffed, and I know what I'm talking about. Number two, because of the understaffing that is still going on, the only thing that is happening is the shuffling of paperwork. These developers are getting away with murder. First of all, the PLAs and the PECs, the Project Employment and Contracting Agreements, and the Project Labor Agreements are not even that strong as it is, but the little bit of stuff that they are supposed to be doing, they are not doing, and not just in relationship to employment. They are supposed to have business relationships here in our city. So all of these fancy, nice research reports, I'm sorry. I did this stuff for 30 years, prior to even coming to Jersey City, and this argument is not one that I started making when I got inside the administration, i.e. Brett Shumler's. I was making this minute, this argument on the outside, and Joanne Monahan will tell you, I have been consistent about it, whether I was an assistant business administrator, whether I was a department head, or deputy mayor. Now, I know for a fact, councilman, these developers are robbing us blind because the enforcement and the monitoring that needs to be done is not done because we do not have enough staff to do it. Just look at the number of abatements that not only we have in the past two years, that we've had over the past 17, 20 years. The other thing I want to address is that Mayor Fuller is absolutely correct in continuing to pursue action against PPG, and I should also say, the state of New Jersey and the site administrator. Because the complicity, I remember when Councilwoman Coleman, then Councilwoman Coleman, now Councilwoman Coleman, was at the last public hearing that we've even had to discuss this issue, which is mandated by that agreement, for the site administrator and PPG to make sure that we have. I can show you letters I sent to the site administrator, asking them, why aren't we even having those meetings? So, not only do I applaud him, and you, and the Law Department, we all need to make sure that our community, citywide, is educated about what this fight is really all about. Because some people think that it's just like a disagreement. It's bigger than a disagreement. So, the whole redevelopment issue is real. That is not something that just started. We have been articulating that position ever since the JCO was developed, and we came before the city council, and the community, and the churches, and asked for that agreement to be ratified. So I applaud you. I applaud the administration, and let us, let us take the time to educate our community, and let us also figure out how we can go after the site administrator and the state of New Jersey, because the level of complicity in this is just mind-boggling. And again, I too want to say, thank you for what you did tonight, for Mayor Cucci. He and Glenn Cunningham, you know, are two people I've always said, if anybody loved this city and grew up in this city, was those two persons. And again, he definitely, I think somebody said the people's mayor, he definitely was that. And I just want to close and say, please, look at our compliance unit. Give them the staff that they need so they can begin to do the monitoring and do the enforcement, so they can document stuff to the Law Department. Thank you.
Eric Anders Nielsen? Not here. Matthew Oldula? Bridgette Souza?
I'm here, I was at a PTA meeting. I'm a parent at PS 22, and also at PS 3. I drop both my kids off at public school, so I get a sense of what the mornings are like in downtown, and a little bit in Ward F, you know, over by PS 22. In the mornings, with the commuting, people coming off... I drop both my kids off at public school, so I get a sense of what the mornings are like in downtown and a little bit in Ward F, you know, over by PS 22. In the mornings, with the commuting, people coming off 78 near Liberty State Park, going to the waterfront, I drop my daughter off first, and then I drop my son off, and then I pick them up again in the afternoons. And there's a serious traffic issue at PS 22 that needs to be solved, and I suspect it exists at a lot of the schools. It's a complicated issue. I suspect you probably are not familiar with it. I suspect, you know, it's one of those issues where you just have to see it, but we need traffic calming. We need what Candace Osborne was able to do in downtown. We need that in near the school and probably elsewhere in, you know, in that vicinity. Right now, it doesn't, so for, well, I mean, traffic calming. So at Holiday and Van Bors, just to give you a sense of what it's like, if you come up to the school during, well, do the numbers first. So between 8:30 a.m. and 8:45 a.m., there's drop-off. And at Holiday and, I think it's Pine, no, not Pine, it's Holiday and Maple, which is right there near Lafayette Park, okay? There are 16 buses that drop off 150 kids within that 20-minute period. These children are pre-K and special needs kids, okay? The pre-K factors into this overcrowding issue that's going on throughout downtown and also in the Journal Square-ish area, because PS 22 has, I think it's 16 or 22, I could be wrong on the number, pre-K classrooms on the ground floor. So they're like the overflow school for Jersey City in terms of pre-K. Now, we can debate the merits of pre-K being for all or for those who need it. Right now, by state law, it's for everyone. So that's just what it is, and that's not going to change until the state changes avid. So we have to deal with, that's like a known constraint, and it's not going to change. And we have market forces which are bringing people into downtown and encouraging them to stay, at least through kindergarten, to take advantage of free pre-K, okay? And then you have other people moving into other areas of the city, and you have other areas of the city that are growing. And so the whole city is growing, and with it, the pre-K population is growing, and more and more parents are staying longer. So you have more people opting to stay in the public schools versus go to charters or versus go to private schools. So we have this population that is growing, and I'm seeing it as a parent, in my particular instance, at PS 3, which, by the way, at Monmouth and York, there's also, you know, you see commuters flying down the street. So basically, what I'm here specifically to ask for, because the school has reached out to the Police Department, I've reached out, you know, Ms. Coleman, I've reached out to your office, I haven't received a response, I realize there's a lot going on, so I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that, you know, we've gone through, there have been various avenues that have been pursued to address this problem. We need basically what teachers, the teachers that are out there, the administrators and the parents, and there aren't that many parents, actually, it's really just parents who drop off and pick up. We need either a street closure, ideally, and we need police officers, we need a beat cop there, because people are parking. What's happening is, not only just a lot of traffic, but people are stopping in the school bus, the bus lane, and they're prohibiting the buses from pulling in, so the buses back up and then block the intersections. And then you have kids in that neighborhood who are trying to cross the streets to get to the school, and it's just, it's a traffic and congestion nightmare, and the worst-case scenario is that, you know, someone's going to get hit by a car, because the other thing is that you have, the Holiday, which runs on the back of PS 22, is parallel to Pacific, which gets you down to Communipaw. So, and cars do, they fly by, because in the morning, people are trying to get to work, or they're just trying to get out. So how can the city, because this is really a city issue, the traffic calming, and specifically around the school at drop-off and pickup times, so in the mornings and the afternoons? We need, like, collaboration with the Police Department. I believe the school is going to be mailing you a letter addressing these concerns, you'll get it on the school letterhead, and also from the PTA, so this is not, I'm here on behalf of other parents at the school, but it needs to be fixed. It's a problem, and I think the most immediate way to fix it is with a police presence, and I don't know how to, no one knows how to get the police to basically collaborate with us, and then also stop signs to help calm the traffic around there. So we need help.
Okay.
The school has, the school has been in touch. We just talked about this last night at the PTA meeting, and I said, "Well, I'm coming here anyway, because I wanted to hear about the annex and that whole thing." So I said, "I'll mention it, I'll ask about this." My understanding is that they've spoken with the Police Department, but they can't really get a response. Like, basically, the administrators have not been able to get sort of what they're asking for, which is either a street closure or a police officer there.
Street closure, you have to go through Pat Logan or Monte Zucker up in, you know, Linden Avenue. Monte's number, I think it's 4429, is it, Sean?
Is that DPW or?
Yes.
547449.
It's located at DPW building, but they're Traffic Engineering.
Bridgette.
Councilperson Waterman.
The school is in my district, but I have not, and I'm sorry if I have not responded to you, but I did not get a message.
No, that's okay. I mean, I'm here now just asking, so I didn't.
I'm always at the school, and it hasn't been mentioned to me. It's not like I'm a...
I know. You know why? It's one of those issues where it kind of comes and goes, and now it's sort of like part of, it's like, it's like one of those things where it's just part of the day, and so the teachers just weather it, everyone just weathers the storm, and like, you know, and I have changed, like, last year, I dropped my daughter off, and I waited with the teachers. So I saw it from beginning to start, I saw, I saw all the congestion build up, and then the teachers get totally stressed out, because they feel obligated to protect these kids.
Can you send me an email?
Yeah, sure.
An email is better than a phone call for me, because I'm going to check that even at tonight, when I finish here, I'm going to check emails.
Okay.
So if you send me an email, I can at least forward that to the proper people so that they can go look at the situation and see if they can do something about it.
Yeah, and it's, and it's the type of thing where you need just, and I don't want to take up too much time, but it's, there's variables involved. So you have the congestion as like a standard issue, and then you have parents who will drop off their kids and stay there in the school zone, and like, one of the frustrations of the administrators and the teachers is that they have no jurisdiction of saying to the person, "Please move." The person doesn't have to move. You need a police officer to say, "Move your cars," so that the buses can pull in.
Send me an email, okay?
Okay.
So Councilperson Waterman is also suggesting she could talk to Pat Logan tomorrow. I figure you've got our attention, so.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Address it.
Thank you.
Ryan Walton. Oh, sorry.
I'll email you back what Pat said, okay? I'm sorry? Email me your phone number.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Ryan Walton, Walton. Dwayne Basketville is not here. Steve Hyman's gone. Philip Carrington.
Last one, is that, last one, man?
No, Jason's still here.
Jason's not talking, he's got a lot of jokes. Good evening, once again, my name is Phil Carrington. I want to speak briefly on the, my topic here is the council refusal to address issues that I raise pertaining to violations of law that you are in control of, and the council refused to monitor law enforcement officials who are violating laws against me. And I've been here time and time again, I've stated clearly, I wrote letters, I have never received a call, and I am considered as a form of disrespect. But before I get into that and get deeper into it, let me digress here for a moment, and I'm very, very disappointed also in Council President Lavaro, because the specificity you're making is very offensive or not understanding to me. First of all, if you don't understand a question that I raise, speak for yourself, sometimes not speak for other people. Last week, you says, "We don't understand you," and as soon as you finished, then Councilman Waterman broke it down in chronological order, and she didn't understand. So you should speak for yourself, you cannot be that plural. And then you make a very annoying statement, saying that Phil, it is a nonprofit organization, and we're speaking about the farmer's market then, and you can't make money at a nonprofit organization. And that is very annoying, because you work for a nonprofit organization, and you make money. You can't make a profit in a nonprofit organization, but you can make money. The farmer's market does not give away the food, you make money, so they sell that. So that's a very annoying statement. Let me get back to my point. I've outlined time and time again that I've been receiving unfair tickets of enforcing officials, not just policemen, but other officials, and they are enforcing your laws. I am at the right place to raise the issue. Not one of you at any time ever addressed the issue. No one looked at the laws when I speak, no one have a tablet, no one have a laptop to check the laws, so you cannot remember these laws or speak on them extemporaneously. So you should at least check the laws, but no one did. I said, last year, for the whole last year and this year, I lose a license from Happy Boar, and I did not receive due process. Your laws, 175-12, says that I need to have, I was supposed to have a 10-day, in 10 days, I supposed to have a hearing, and I should have something in writing. We're saying that the license was suspended or revoked based upon whatever he's suspended for. Today, we had the director of the Health Department here, but she left. So no one ever raised the issue, is that you really don't care, or that what I said is like, "Let the Negro speak and then let him go," because I've been here time and time again. It is not fair. These are your laws they are enforcing, and for you not to monitor them or to question the way that they are enforcing or not enforcing is just wrong. I said last week that I got a ticket, saying I didn't have a license. I explained that the police took the license off the card. He also, I also given the original, then took a picture of the license and still give me a ticket. Whose law are they enforcing? I had to go to court three times to have that dismissed by the court. Well, it got a little worse. I receive another ticket, ticket number 280584, saying that I violated law 175-13D. I was trying to explain to the prosecutor that there's no such law. She said she didn't want to hear me. We got to go before the judge, and to their embarrassment, the judge said, "There's no such law." How are you going to prosecute me on a law that does not exist, and no one is listening? I mean, so where do we go with this? Who do you go to? These are your laws. Again, 175-12, explain if your license is going to be suspended or revoked, you can appeal it, you can have an attorney. This is due process. Happy Boar is incompetent, and he's ignorant to the laws. As I said again last week, he said that he was going to suspend the other license that I have. I have one for the person, and one for my personally, and then one for the organization. He said, "Based upon the fact that you copied a government document," he was going to suspend the license. Well, I asked him to bring the law, as I said. The law says to copy the license. That shows that he's ignorant to the laws that he's enforcing. How are you going to have a chief of inspector inspected and doesn't know the law?
Thank you.
Or does no one, no, I need, someone need to tell me if I'm going to get an answer to this question? It's not thank you, it's unfair. I need to know exactly if you're going to have someone address the issue.
Thank you, Phil.
It's not thank you. Are you going to address the issue? Because according to, according to 35019, you need to address the issue.
Shut up. Phil. Thank you, Phil.
Phil, tomorrow morning, 10 a.m., if you come to my office, you, me, and we'll talk to the director, and we'll address these issues. 10 a.m. Could that, could you make it?
I'll try, yeah. I'll have to look at my schedule.
10 a.m., I'll be there.
Lavaro, I'm disappointed.
Excuse me?
I'm disappointed.
Should I comment on that?
Yeah, you can. You've declared demi, but you never, never.
For the record, I want to thank Happy Boar for his great work for the city.
Excuse me?
I said, "For the record, I want to thank Happy Boar for doing the good work that he does for our city." Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Jason Berg.
Hi, Jason Berg. I am the coordinator for National Alliance. We are a organization that is dedicated to reestablishing the Constitution, Constitution back to the people, and also bringing back the common law grand jury. In our latest documents, we have something called a mandamus. It's Latin for "We command." "We, the people of this state of New Jersey, by our own authority, through the United, unified United States Common Law Grand Jury, command all elected and appointed servants to obey the Constitution for the United States of America, which guarantees that every state of this union and the people therefore constitutional republic, former government, the Fifth Amendment Constitution guarantees pursues an investigational body acting independently of either the prosecuting attorney or the judge, infinitely by technical rules. Therefore, judges and clerks have no authority to prevent, obstruct, or interfere with the people's necessary access to their courts, to our courts, during our true grassroots effort at National Alliance." And you go on there, you'll find more information. On Tuesday, I went to the United States Courthouse in 50 Walnut Street, and I did an affidavit. I was met, I met with my two other colleagues, Lydia Raiden and Terrence Culpepper, members of National Alliance. We have been violated by the establishment that is supposed to be doing us the favor to provide us with quality judgment. And we all said, "I, Jason Berg, a Marine, one of the people of New Jersey, being of full age, having personal firsthand knowledge of the following facts, and competent and willing to testify, swear upon the penalty of perjury, the following. On Tuesday, 10/25/15, about 10:30 a.m., I accompanied Miss Lydia Raiden to the federal courthouse located in Newark, New Jersey, along with Terrence Culpepper, to exercise our constitutional protection right to petition our government for redress of grievances as we are crime victims. Two, on the first floor, unidentified receptionist, a woman in black attire, asked us to take a seat in the grand jury room waiting room and wait for a supersizer to come out to speak to us. While we complied with her request, the U.S. Marshals, some of them who refused to identify themselves or give their business cards, intimidated us, interjected themselves into our private affairs unwarranted, and created a fiction that we were trying to push or storm our way into the grand jury room. The jury work leader, Roseanne Philly Rossett, came out to speak to us to let us know that the members of the grand jury were assembling, at which point, without prompting, we immediately moved to the hall. The leader gave us the information for the jury administrator, Michelle Valerio. I can't get more in this. Basically, we were harassed, we were trying to do our best to speak to the grand jury. Grand jury is a fourth pillar of government, which has, again, no strings attached by the judicial, the legislature, nor the executive branch. And I keep on saying it, the executive orders have been illegal since 1862, when Lincoln eliminated habeas corpus, and for 153 years, executive orders are illegal, and we have the fiasco with the president superseding the rights of Congress and the Senate to pass its own laws. And it's very important, folks, if you want something done, you have to do it yourself. But again, freedom is not free, it's an illusion. We're all slaves here under the Fourteenth Amendment. Read it. You don't have the right if you're a citizen, but you have a lot of rights when you're a sovereign, which is, being a sovereign, you are given the power to the God Almighty to be your own individual state of mind and be responsible for your own actions. I seek no harm to any man, but I will seek self-protection against any group that that man represents that wants to hurt me. Thank you very much, God bless.
Thank you. Okay, Jermaine Robinson and Wayne Harmon both left, so we're done with the public speaking portion. On to petitions and communications, 6A through 6Z3. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Officer Communications, 7A and 7B, and reporter directors, 8A and 8B. Claims and addendum number one, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman. And Council President Lavaro. Claims and addendum number one are approved 9-0. On to our resolutions. Items 10A through 10M, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman, and Council President Lavaro.
Lavaro.
Aye. Items 10A through 10M are approved 9-0. Items 10N through 10V, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchell.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye, aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
We're voting on items 10N through 10V.
Who's up?
Me? Councilperson Young.
Councilperson Young?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President Lavaro.
Aye.
Items 10N through 10V are approved 9-0. Items 10W through 10Z5, with the exception of 10Z4, which has been withdrawn due to the fact that there was no P.O. number ever given. So on items 10ZW through 10Z5, Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchell.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
No on W, because, once again, Persian Field and Mosquito Park is, are excluded on everything.
Okay, and I on the rest?
Yes.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President Lavaro.
Aye.
10W is approved 8-1, with Councilperson Bajana voting no, and items 10X through 10Z5, with the exception of 10Z4, are approved 9-0. On to our balance of the resolutions, 10Z6 through 10Z14, with the exception of 10Z13, which did not get added. Councilperson Kajuski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchell.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
I vote aye, and I just would like to commend Mark Redfield at the job he's done, and say we are super thrilled to have you on board permanently in that role.
Thank you. Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Council President Lavaro.
Congratulations, Director Redfield, I vote aye.
Items 10Z6 through 10Z14, with the exception of 10Z13, which was not added, withdrawn, are approved 9-0. Before I take a motion to adjourn, I just wanted to give my sincere condolences to Councilwoman Coleman on her loss of her dad, and a happy belated birthday to Councilwoman Waterman, who doesn't have a voice now. On that, may I have a motion to adjourn at 10:51 p.m.? Motion made by Councilperson Coleman, seconded by Councilperson Ramchell. On the motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are at 10:51.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.